Eight, seven, six, five.
Five.
Good morning and welcome to the August 12th Board of County Commissioners Meeting. I'm Kate Flavin, Public Information Officer with Sedgwick County. You'll see this morning we are streaming our Commission meeting on KPTS Channel 8. We are also live streaming on the county's Facebook and YouTube channels. Commissioners are once again divided by Plexiglas barriers. Staff are socially distanced in this Commission meeting room and we are also wearing masks. I have mine here on my wrist. This morning, I like to provide a brief overview of yesterday's Commission meeting, Commission staff meeting, and you'll remember that we do stream those live on our social media channels and we also have a link on YouTube as well if you want to go in and watch the full meeting. So on Monday, County leaders had a phone call with area hospitals and we learned about 75% of patients in our hospitals are county residents. You'll recall that Via Christi and Wesley are regional facilities and so not all of our patients in those hospitals are actually county residents. The manager noted that if numbers continue to decline and hospitalizations decline, he may move the status from yellow moderate to green. We learned that last week 1,100 people were sampled by the Health Department and the week before that, we sampled about 1,200 people. This week, the Health Department started rolling out a patient portal where residents who were tested by the Health Department could go online with a two-factor authentication, so having one thing they know and one thing they receive to confirm their results and keep those results private. They can check their results instead of waiting on a phone call, they can go in online and see if they are positive, negative for COVID-19, or if the results have not yet been returned. We also know that the Health Department is still hiring a number of positions for the COVID-19 response and recovery. We are working with temporary agencies to fill the gaps and we recognize that medical professionals are among the highest need in our community and we know that there's still some fear or some trepidation in medical professionals to actually test for COVID-19 because of the newness of the virus. So be sure to check out all of the positions that are ready to be filled on our Sedgwick County website, sedgewickcounty.org as well. Last week, the Health Department started contact tracing with KDHE, Kansas Department of Health and Environment. And so with the numbers of COVID-19 continuing to increase, the number of close contacts also increased. And last week, the Health Department coordinated with KDHE to begin helping us facilitate those contact tracing and managing the number of folks that we are currently monitoring. This morning, Colonel White is here from the jail to provide us an update on COVID-19 in that facility, so I will turn the podium over to Colonel White.
Good morning, Colonel.
Thank you, Kate, and good morning, Commissioners. Thank you for having me here this morning. I'll provide you an overview. I have a PowerPoint here prepared to give you an overview of current conditions as it relates to COVID-19 in the detention facility. And obviously, I'll field any questions that you may have as I move through this. These numbers here are just our current housing conditions. As you see at the bottom of this slide is how many beds we typically have at the facility. We have COTS that we can increase our housing and we can also, when you look at this bottom number at 1406, if you look at the number directly above that, that was our inmates as of Monday. Now, this number changes every day. So our current number to this morning, I checked it before I came over, was 1510. So when you look at that, you can see we're about 100 inmates over our capacity. The thing that you have to consider when you look at this slide is that 89 of those folks are in booking at that moment when we had this number pulled. And those inmates are not part of the 1406 that we have the beds for. So when you look at that, it's a little misleading unless you look at this report on a daily basis. Out-of-county housing also, those folks are housed at a different location, in a different facility. So when you look at this report, the middle line, out-of-county, is 47th, so those folks are not in the Sedgwick County detention facility. Those folks are housed at other facilities around the state. Currently, we only are working with a few county jails that are very regional and very This is a quick overview of our testing plan that we rolled out this week. We met with state officials and experts from KDHE after we had done some of the contact tracing related to some of the positive tests that we had in the jail. When we met with the expert, based on some of the results that we were receiving from that contact tracing of just a handful of inmates that had received positive tests, his recommendation to us was to test every inmate in the facility and all of our staff. So we began that testing process on Monday. We tested approximately 350 inmates on Monday and again, another 350 inmates yesterday and we'll probably have that number again today and tomorrow, hopefully wrapping up the approximately 1,500 inmates that we currently have and are currently housing. The second main bullet point here that says quarantine pods for incoming inmates, so as I mentioned, we'll test everyone that is in the facility currently, but we will also test folks that are booked into the jail and then moved from housing. So some folks are booked into the jail and only there for a few hours. They will not be tested. They will be processed and released from booking and will not be moved to our housing section of the jail. If you are an inmate that is going to be moved from booking to housing, we will test you. And then we will have to maintain that group of inmates. They will have to be in the same group, the same cohort group while we await that testing to return. This is our current numbers and again, this is going to change every day, multiple times during the day. And so this is a snapshot of where we were at on August 10th, Monday. These are the inmates that we had tested. Up to this point, as it relates to inmates that were symptomatic or were part of that contact tracing, which was part of our original strategy. So we had 114 positives and 127 negatives. And then staff tests were seven positive and 25 negative. These numbers have increased slightly over the last two days. Current positives, I checked this morning, are at 123 for inmates and 144 negatives. Current positive for staff tests are seven, I'm sorry, 11 positives and 36 negatives. It will, we expect to start hearing either today or tomorrow, the results of the 350 or so tests that we completed on Monday. We will start finding those results today and tomorrow. And then these numbers will change dramatically as the week rolls on and in the next week. Does anyone have any questions for me?
Commissioner Cruz.
Thank you. Thank you for being here today and for providing us that information. Are there any inmates in our jail right now that can be released?
We make about 30 to 40 released typically right now during these current conditions. We're releasing about 30 to 40 inmates every day. We will also move from booking into housing about 30 to 40 inmates. So there's kind of this migration of folks that are released as part of the processes where the courts end up releasing them. But then we'll also have folks that are moving from booking into housing. A few weeks ago, we met again, we'll roll back a few months to give you a very quick snapshot here. We had worked with the courts, municipal court and district court on good strategies on releasing inmates in a very responsible manner. We did that early on in this pandemic and we began to see some of the numbers in our community decline. Courts and the Sedgwick County Sheriff's Office began to increase our housing a little bit and started making, moving more people into housing and then we started seeing these numbers increase. So a few weeks ago, we returned to the courts, both municipal and county, and said we need to go back to some of our earlier strategies, which we are doing. But it's been a very brief amount of time and we really haven't seen the impact of some of those strategies returning to us impact jail population, but we expect that that will start happening very soon.
So there's no one in our jail right now that's nonviolent, that's just waiting a trial?
There were some commitments, so if the courts find that someone is guilty and then they have a commitment at the jail where they have to serve a, sometimes it's a very short amount of time. It could be a couple of days or a couple of weeks. Sometimes those commitments, those folks are, report to the jail and serve their commitment. In our conversations with the courts, we have asked that we back off of that a little bit and they have responded, but we just haven't seen those things take place. The overwhelming majority of our inmates that are housed in the Sedgwick County Detention Facility are for violent offenses for the most part. So there's very little latitude with that small population in general.
How frequently do you revisit the folks that are in the jail for being nonviolent, awaiting trial and not like a flight risk?
How often do we look at those numbers?
Yeah.
Every day, all the time, even before this.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, I would hope that if we're doing, you know, if folks could be at home awaiting trial, we could alleviate some of those numbers in some way. So I appreciate what you do. Thank you for being here today to explain the situation.
Absolutely. Thank you. Any other questions?
Commissioner Howell.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Colonel White, thank you for the information this morning and you gave us some initial numbers and then you said that we've updated those numbers a little bit. Is that based on two days' worth of testing so far?
Actually, those numbers where the tests have come back are some of the contact tracing numbers, some of the contact tracing numbers that we received in the interim. Also, we were testing people as part of our daily process, but they were smaller in numbers. So it typically takes us anywhere from two to four days to receive some of this data back. But we've also worked to increase the efficiency with that. So as part of our testing process over the last two days, we have taken our tests directly to Topeka every evening and essentially hand-delivered them so we can get results back faster. So some, those numbers that you're seeing here and the increases, no, that is not part of the testing we've done the last two days.
So just make sure I understand, so when you take that, take those swabs to Topeka, how long till you get the results back on those?
Typically about 48 hours.
So logistically, I'm trying to imagine how you're separating all these people based on where they are in the process, but if someone in that group tests positive, then you've got a whole new problem, don't you?
Yeah, so we have to be prepared to move them and what we've done with these groups here that, you know, we add this up, that's 167, or 267, 267 inmates we have results on right now. So we've had to divide this population up into positive and negatives.
But also, since this test really is just a moment in time, the moment of testing is what you're checking, but while they're waiting for those results, a lot more transmission could happen. When you get the results back, you can't act like this is, I mean, you can't, it doesn't seem smart to act like this is the current status when it's been a couple of days since the test was taken and they're in those close, they're in these close quarters, if you will. I've been over there, obviously, and looked at the configuration of the jail. Some of these folks are, I understand, two in a small cell, for example, at night, for example, but there's pods that they can socialize, if you will, during the daytime. There's other places are more like dormitories. Are you using the dormitory areas right now?
It depends on where their status is. So let me get into a little more detail so you can kind of get a better picture.
I guess my, let me just cut to the chase here. What I'm concerned about is the dynamic response is not dynamic enough, which we really got, what we needed right now was a type of screening, a screening tool rather than a diagnostic tool. Again, we're continuing to use this PCR nasal pharyngeal swab and it's, again, it's accurate, it's a tremendously good test. But in this situation, what we really need to do is find out today, if possible, as soon as possible, the screening and put people in different camps and then don't have, we don't need a couple of days to get results back. It's more of a screening than it would be a diagnostic test. And so I guess I'm just, we're kind of using the tool, the best we have available, but it's not really serving the needs to solve this problem. And what we need to do is a moment in time, be able to separate people, whether they have the virus or not. By the time you get your results back, your whole situation's changed. So I don't know how you separate people if you have to use the dormitory in any way and someone in that group tests positive, you have a whole new problem. In a sense, you have to go back and test them all again, even those others, because they may have been infected while you're waiting for the results to come back. So this is a very, very complex problem.
Yes, part of what you're saying is true and part of it is not true. So if you have two positive people together, they can't infect each other. They're positive, right? Okay. If you have two negative people together, then you also need to continue testing them and that's part of our process. We'll have to continue to test them as part of our testing process.
So let's say you have two people together and you're waiting for results.
Right.
And one of them comes back positive, but the moment, the day of testing, you got the results back, one at that time was negative, one was positive. You know, we don't know what the status of the negative one is now because they may have been impacted while you're waiting for the two days to happen to get the results back.
Right. You could even, you could even test somebody though and they could come back negative, but the virus hasn't infected them enough where you're going to get a positive result. So you could test everybody multiple times a day and you still won't know definitively if they have the virus. That's why you have to continue to test them, continue to test your negatives and your positives, you house together. There's actually four separate sections that we have to house people in. We have to house people in, and really, it's even more than that, but I don't want to take too much of your time, but I'll try and explain it to you. We've got the positives, we have the negatives, we have the people that are coming in for testing, we have the people that are awaiting testing, we have the people that are symptomatic that are also positives, we have the people that are symptomatic that we're awaiting those testing results to come back. So there's multiple groups to consider when you're trying to manage this population.
And I appreciate that very much and it just sounds extremely difficult to manage all that.
It is.
I appreciate your thoughtful approach to that. I guess, we'll be talking about this, I think tomorrow, we'll have a meeting, I guess, talking about our next step on, and how we will hopefully enhance our testing capabilities in Sedgwick County. But one thing I guess I'll continue to push for is we need to get the results quickly and that's been, that's continuing to be a problem. And I think in your situation, even a couple of days, as good as that is, it's not good enough. I think your problem is out of, in a sense, you're doing the best you can, but you can't control this if it's two days.
Right. So in addition to that, the expert that we brought in is, has managed other jails and other prison populations. He's an expert in this field and then also has recent expertise as it relates to managing jail populations. One of the jails that, or prisons that he helped manage was after Larned had spun up and there were a lot of positive tests there and he helped maintain and get that facility under control. So he has some experience managing a facility like ours, multiple facilities like ours.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Dennis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Colonel, thank you for being here today. We appreciate it, appreciate the update. First of all, just to comment, we have medical care in our jail and so every one of those inmates that you showed on the chart are getting medical care and in many cases, they don't have medical insurance on the outside, so they have a little bit more difficulty getting the care that they're getting in the jail.
That is correct, yes. We have a clinic on site. It's fully staffed 24/7.
My worry is, I don't know what happens when we do release them, if they're either positive or if they're possible positive. Then they're going back into the community at that point in time. So what happens when we get ready to release someone for some reason?
So if we release somebody, then we will check to find them, we work to find them and tell them the results of their testing. And it's similar to testing that happens in the community at large. So some folks go and get their testing, they don't know the results immediately, but then they wait for those results to come in.
Okay. But the one positive, if there's any positive about being in jail, which I can't say that there'd be too many for me being positive, but they are getting medical care while that they're in the jail.
That's correct.
Okay. Well, thank you. That's the only points that I wanted to make. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Colonel, I'd just comment that, in speaking to Sheriff yesterday, and you addressed it briefly in your recent comment, I'm glad that KDHE has handed you a person or two that helped manage Larned through their crisis and I guess Lansing facility during their crisis. So I'm glad that you guys were able to lean on some of that experience instead of trying to invent it all by yourself, so.
Yeah, and I appreciate that and as we move through the, managing this pandemic, not only for our entire county, but also for our population, things have changed and we've had to
Right.
...create new strategies along the way. So we're very fortunate to have somebody that has that experience that we can lean on to give us a better plan going forward.
Right. Well, I'm glad that KDHE is helping to turn around those tests, looks like put you at the top of the class for trying to get results, so thanks to KDHE for doing the best they can too.
Yeah, and I appreciate their help.
Okay.
Chairman, I was wondering if we could have one of the Colonels here comment on an order that Judge Garing put out on Monday that I think is germane for people to hear and also to talk about any status change with being able to allow people into the KDOC system. Colonel, if you could comment on, just very briefly for the Commission.
Yes, sir. So we have been communicating through this entire process with the courts and the District Attorney's Office and those representing the defendants. Yesterday, an order was sent out by Judge Garing and essentially what we're going to do is we won't have any in-person hearings with those inmates. And we already had an infrastructure built that we can lean on and use as part of the communication process for those inmates with the courts. So essentially, they'll be using WebEx to communicate with the courts for the hearings that are necessary. And again, we already have all that infrastructure set up. We just needed to spin it back up and get it ready to go again.
Yeah, that's good. Thank you. Thanks for that update. Anything else?
Are we able to, the state is not accepting people from us at this time, correct?
They, we have been working with them. We are close to, now that we're incorporating some of their rules that they are familiar with and that we're kind of operating from the same sheet of music now, once we have inmates that have moved through the testing process that they're comfortable with, then we will send them inmates, yes.
Thank you, sure. Appreciate it. Okay. Thanks again, Colonel.
All right. Thank you very much.
All right, Kate, what else do we have?
Absolutely. So we've got a busy morning, a busy rest of the week as well. There is a vote canvas tomorrow morning to finalize the results of the primary election, so that'll be at nine o'clock in the morning at the elections office. Then we do have a special meeting tomorrow at 11:00 a.m. here in this room to talk about COVID-19 testing, so busy day tomorrow. And then also beginning tomorrow through Saturday is the Sedgwick County E-Waste Collection Event, so residents can safely dispose of old or unused electronics and electrical equipment at the Sedgwick County West Yard from 9:00 a.m. until 2:00 p.m. And if you can't make it this week, we do have Thursday through Saturday next week available as well. More details are on, it would help if I would take this off, more details are on the Sedgwick County Facebook page and our Twitter account and also on our Sedgwick County homepage, sedgewickcounty.org. On the agenda this morning, we have the Metropolitan Area Planning Department is here with a zone change request in District 5. You'll consider an agreement with Evergy related to renewable energies for county facilities. We'll receive the quarterly financial report. There are two discussions today related to CARES funding and the CARES Act. You'll consider the 2021 budget and CIP program. There's a report of the Board of Bids and Contracts and then we also have a FIRE agenda for the FIRE budget and Bid Board for FIRE. So Chairman, busy day, and I will hand the meeting to you.
Okay. Thank you, Kate, and we will welcome everybody for watching on our Facebook Live and YouTube and KPH. Anyway, with that, we will call the Board of Sedgwick County Commissioners Meeting to order for Wednesday, August 12th. Madam Clerk, next.
In vacation, to be observed by a moment of silence, please remain standing for the flag salute.
Thank you.
Flag allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and the true republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Roll call. Commissioner O'Donnell.
Present.
Commissioner Dennis.
Present.
Commissioner Howell.
Present.
Commissioner Cruz.
Present.
Chairman Meitzner.
Present. Next item, please.
Public agenda.
Commissioners, we've had a number of people sign up today to address us and the public agenda, so we will start with, go in order. I see what the topics are. Based on the fact that we have 10 people signed up and we've got a busy, busy schedule today, could be a lengthy one, so we limit the speakers to three minutes. And welcome and please state your name and address and good morning.
Good morning. My name is Margaret Brandt and I live in the 4th District. As this COVID-19 situation has unfolded before our eyes, I've been watching the responses of Sweden, America and the rest of the world. Most of America's and much of the world's answer has been to have a total societal shutdown and mask mandates. The Swedes placed some restrictions on visiting nursing homes, encouraged social distancing and working from home when possible, limiting large gatherings of people but never had a countrywide lockdown and in fact, even left schools open for young children. They still don't mandate masks. Why would they do something like that? Weren't they afraid that millions of their own citizens would die? No, and the reason is science. For thousands of years, humans have existed in this world that is filled with bacteria, viruses and fungi. How are we not completely overtaken by these potentially deadly microbes? Because we have a very impressive immune system. Aside from the physical barriers like skin, the mucus and mucous membranes and the cilia that line the respiratory tract, then we have chemical barriers like acid in our stomach or enzymes in our tears and saliva, we also have specialized cells in our blood that protect us from invaders and that make it farther into our system. Some of those specialized cells devour the foreign invaders and others produce antibodies for a more detailed response. Eventually, the antibodies will disappear, but that is both expected and okay because the memory B cells hang out in our bodies for decades, ready to both, to immediately recreate antibodies to fight the microbes if they ever enter our bodies again. At that time, they will be able to act faster, so you may not feel nearly as sick as you first did, or you may never feel sick at all. According to an email that I received from Dr. Menz, COVID-19 has a death rate of 0.6% in Sedgwick County. That means statistically that if any of us who live in Sedgwick County get COVID-19, there is a 99.4% chance that you will live. That is great news. Some of you Commissioners have expressed to me through email that you are concerned about the rising number of COVID-19 cases in Sedgwick County, but so long as the death cases are dropping, which they are, you don't have to worry about the rising positive cases. All higher cases mean is that we're getting free lifelong immunity and the coveted herd immunity from COVID-19 that we need right now. Many companies are trying to fashion a vaccine right now, but it is not guaranteed to be safe, it is not guaranteed to be effective, and it is not guaranteed that it's even possible to create one. I personally have a medical condition that makes it dangerous for me to wear a mask and have been discriminated against and denied service or even entry. Even as I prepared to speak to you today, I faced discrimination. I contacted Commissioner Cruz to let her know that it was dangerous for me to wear a mask. She then referred me to Tanya Cole, the Assistant County Manager, who told me that if I would not wear a face shield in this building, I could not address you in person. And they still didn't even honor that because I was still required to wear a mask with the face shield. That specifically goes against the mask mandate exemptions of both Sedgwick County and Wichita. The government of Sedgwick County did not honor the very exemptions that they mandated. I can't tell you how many times I've gone into the bathroom at a grocery store and someone comes in with their mask. I'm washing my hands, singing the alphabet song in my head for proper timing and they use the bathroom, come out of the stall, walk out.
Ms. Brandt, your three minutes is up. Can you wrap it up real quick?
Absolutely. I'll read faster.
Well.
Even though they're spreading bacteria, you can't see with everything that they touch, they're still seen as healthy and loving, and I'm not, because I don't have a mask on. A mask mandate is a false sense of security. It is not based in science. How many news articles, scientific journals, and indeed the CDC website use language like "may help prevent," "could help prevent," "might potentially spread"? And when they're using that kind of language, they're not giving you facts anymore, but strictly opinions. So watch for that as you're researching anything.
Ms. Brandt, thank you.
I urge you to look at the facts. I urge you to look at the science. The, I've seen some of the doctors who address this board, and I've heard some of you say that we need to listen to the experts. But if the doctors and the experts are not basing their decisions on science, then you have the duty to free the people of Sedgwick County from heavy burdens. And let's be honest, the politics of mask mandates and lockdowns.
Okay, Ms. Brandt, thank you for your comments. You're well spoken, and appreciate it. But we have a lot of people addressing us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Sandra Scott. And a reminder, we have three minutes. State your name and address, please.
Good morning. My name is Sandra Scott, and I live at 2130 South Parkwood Lane in Wichita. How are y'all doing today? I know COVID-19 is real. That's not the debate today. I am an owner of two bars in Wichita that are closed because of the mandate that the mayor and U-County Commissioners voted for. I am here to say shame on you guys. Y'all have assumed that we would not follow the mandates in regards to the masks, the social distancing, and limited gatherings. I'm here to tell you, we would have. So again, shame on you all for assuming. There has been no clusters in any bars in Wichita that I am aware of. If I am wrong, please stop me now. I will walk away. The only clusters that I am aware of are in churches, long-term care facilities, the prison, Sedgwick County Jail. So now I pose a question to you all. Why are our bars, nightclubs, and restaurants getting the blame for the COVID-19 numbers in which there has been no clusters? But now, we're the ones that are shut down. I'm sorry, but it looks like to me that our governor, mayor, and you guys are for big business, not a small business. So now, just in case you still don't get what I'm saying, I'd like to break it down. It's just not affecting me and my family and all of our business bills and our home bills, but it's affecting, it's trickling down to my employees and their families, them paying their bills, feeding their families, keeping a roof over their heads, not to mention school starting up with school supplies, school clothes that we all have to buy, and just everyday necessities. Next, another small business that's being affected is my accountant's office. There are small businesses also, Kenza County. They're losing clients because of the mandate, and small businesses like bars, nightclubs, and restaurants being shut down is hurting them also. Next would be our liquor stores that depend on us for a better part of their income, and not to mention everybody else's families that I've mentioned above. Everybody's being affected because of all the closures. So this is not a direct loss for all of us, the owners. It's hurting numerous families. So on August 21st, when this is reevaluated, keep in mind all the families being devastated by y'all's votes. Please. That's all I have.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Scott. I don't see any questions. So appreciate your comments. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on the list is Devon Verona. Good morning, Devon. State your name and address. You have three minutes.
Good morning. Devon Verona, 18,000 West Highview, Goddard, Kansas. So you know, they say that public speaking is up there with fear of death for a lot of people. So I thank you for your patience as we navigate sharing our perspective of the last five months in three minutes. So I'm here, I'm here, but I'm here for my five kids. I've got twin four-year-olds, I've got twin nine-year-olds, and I've got a 15-year-old. We have a rule in our home that if there's an issue or if something doesn't sit right, you don't complain, you step to the plate. And so I am grateful for the tough choices that you've had to make until this point. And today, I hope, is just a further call to action as you navigate the days ahead. I think that there's confusion in our society around whether or not Sedgwick County is in a state of emergency or a state of recovery. When we look at that question, that should dictate how we make the choices on forced medical mandates, in my opinion. A friend of mine lives in Orange County, and their mask mandate was overturned because someone pointed out from a legal standpoint, if you've ever been in a hospital, you can't be in the emergency room and the recovery room at the same time. And so the county was making choices based on a state of emergency, but once they were out of that, and I heard the numbers from the hospitals, it sounds like we're in green. So as we move forward, I hope that the mandates and the choices that your citizens are given reflect that. Now, I'm a healthcare practitioner, and one of the things that we get in medical ethics from the very beginning is risk-benefit analysis. When the President of the United States stepped back and went, wow, New York is not California, California's not Texas, Texas is not Kansas, he tossed the ball to the governor, and the governor went, wow, Sedgwick County's not Reno County, it's not Johnson County, you know, here's the county. And you instantly became more important than the President of the United States to the citizens, the half a million people that you represent here in Sedgwick County. And great, that comes with great responsibility. And when there's a healthcare mandate, that is a medical treatment. In my courses on medical ethics, that should be given proper risk-benefit analysis. So I would ask you, do you feel that those 500,000 people that you represent have been given proper risk and benefit analysis, proper protocols on how to use these masks, wash these masks, when it's safe, when it's not? If there's risk, there should be choice. My worry is about this particular mandate, but it's also where do we stop? Jeff Blubow asked that question yesterday. Where does this go from here and based on what? And I think your citizens that you do represent need a little more clarification on what that looks like, please, to the best of your ability. But if this is a medical treatment, then we should be given choice. And I can tell you stories about the women that come to my practice and share with me that they've been brutally assaulted and abused in the past, and they panic when they put a mask on their face. Or I can tell you about the kids that are having panic attacks in preparation for school, or the vet that was refused service at the lumber store because he doesn't wear it, because he has PTSD for the war he fought in for our freedoms. But you have emotional stories on the other side of the coin, right? For every heads, there's a tails. We could talk science, and for every heads, there's a tails. So let's go legal. I grew up in this county courthouse with my mom, and there's those scales of justice. Your job from up there is not the left, it's not the right, it's to hold the line. So put a quarter in your pocket, hold the line, hold the Constitution, give us choice. Where there is risk, there should be choice. Thank you.
Thank you, Devon, for addressing us. I don't see any questions. Next up is, on the list is Marty Spence. Good morning, Marty.
Good morning. It's tough to follow that one. How are you this morning?
Fine. Thank you for addressing us. You have three minutes. State your name and address.
My name is Marty Spence, and I'm at 928 West Riverside Avenue here in Wichita, Kansas.
Okay.
I come today because, like many have heard, we are navigating really chaotic waters. And we're looking to you as leaders to help competently guide us through those waters, which is why we chose you. And I could talk from different angles, but today I choose that of a business steward. I have one of the most health-conscious cafes in Sedgwick County, Songbird Juice Company. We're a plant-based cafe. And I don't own Songbird Juice Company. I steward Songbird Juice Company. And it's taught me a lot about lifestyle. And amidst all of these mandates, I've gotten to know a lot of the people that have shifted lifestyles amidst my journey as a cafe owner. I'm hearing language that is really polluted, mandates that in Section 3 says are voluntary. As a business owner, I'm being asked, and even the language being used is required, to navigate who comes in and out of my business with a facial covering and how that looks. And as a business owner, I can tell you that I want to include everybody, and I continue to provide that safe space for everybody to come. I, too, fall into that anomaly where I have a health condition that prevents me from putting a facial covering on. But I've been labeled an anti-masker. I've been called ruthless names in the arena. I have been told that my health-conscious business couldn't possibly be health-conscious anymore because I don't wear a mask. Even when I called to speak today, I was assured I wouldn't be let in. And I came anyway because I thought maybe you would listen. I still believe you will. Downstairs, I don't know if you heard, but there was quite a stir when I came in and was asked to wear a facial shield and a mask, to which I replied, I have a health exemption and I cannot. The woman in the front was very kind and encouraged me to just hold the mask in front of my face. It would be okay. So I did. But then I got to the next phase of this, and I was told, you need to put the mask on. And I repeated again, I have a health exemption and I cannot. He said, you have to put the mask on. So then the next person came down, the supervisor, demanded I put the mask on. By the time I was done with this, I wasn't sure I was even going to make it up here to talk to you. And so everything I wrote, I don't want to say it anymore. But when we continue to treat each other this way over a piece of fabric and we stop trusting each other's health choices, then we enter into a really scary platform for our people. We need guidance. What is an emergency? What is our goal? How do we get out of this box? Because going to the grocery store is scary for me. And I want to live here the way I used to live here, safely and with community. Thank you.
Thank you, Marty. Hope your business continues to do okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is James Kilpatrick. Good morning, James. State your name and address. You have three minutes. Addresses.
James Kilpatrick, 2101 West MacArthur Road, Wichita, Kansas. What I'm here for today is I'm asking you to end all restrictions possible created by COVID-19. KDHE and CDC have classified COVID-19 as a flu virus. The treatment for COVID-19 is the recommended treatment for seasonal flu. Dr. Fossey does not believe COVID-19 will be eradicated even with a vaccine. He expects COVID-19 to become a seasonal flu virus. The reaction to COVID-19 should be the same as for the flu. You have a chart. This chart is taken from the Sedgwick County Dashboard. As you can see, this is the negative test area. Up here is the positive test area. And over here, the small area, is where we're getting hospitalizations and deaths. The important thing about this chart isn't even the numbers. All the difficulties we're experiencing with COVID-19 come from this big area, the test area. The damage being done by COVID-19 is the small area. It is the one producing hospitalizations and deaths. Everything else that's causing damage is being done by regulations and the government. So if we do away with this, we can do it. Now, I can extrapolate that and show you what I'm going to use President Obama. When I extrapolate that data to show that all the damage was done by political government bodies for COVID-19, President Obama during the swine flu pandemic of 2009, today we call it H1N1, he had the testing stopped after three months. All states were stopped from testing, except for medical research, and the pandemic lasted for 19 months, without the harmful effects that we are experiencing today with COVID-19. Dr. Fossey was in his current position in 2009 that he's in today. Let me tell you why they stopped it. CDC recognized early in the outbreak that once the disease was widespread, it would be more valuable to transition to standard surveillance systems to monitor illness, hospitalization, and deaths. So today, swine flu still exists as part of the component for seasonal flu. Imagine what we would be doing if we'd stopped the testing four months ago, like President Obama did. On March 24th, the CDC changed the definition for COVID-19 cases. National Vital Statistics System states, however, the rules for coding and selection of the underlying cause of death are expected to result in COVID-19 being the underlying cause of death more often than not. What happened after the change? The national death toll went from 494 to 11,051.
Okay. Mr. Kilpatrick, can you, Mr. Kilpatrick, can you wrap it up?
I will.
Your time's up. Thank you.
Another example, New York City went from 6,661 to 10,361, just because the government changed the definition of what COVID-19 was. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Kilpatrick. Don't see any questions. Next up, no, there's no questions. Thank you, sir. Next up, Danielle McCoy.
Good morning.
Hey, good morning.
Please state your name and address. You have three minutes. Addresses.
Danielle McCoy, and I'll go with Wichita, Kansas. Full address, you can look it up if you're curious. I'm gonna start with gratitude. Thank you, guys, for having this conversation. Thank you for being here. Thank you for choosing the rules and making hard decisions. I'm gonna also request that we set the space here with open minds and open hearts, and that nobody's mind is for sure made up. A few of the things that I feel like I can add to the conversation or reiterate as part of the conversation. The messaging surrounding this virus and its response is hard to follow at best. When this first started, drastic measures were taken to flatten the curve, not overwhelm hospitals, and save lives. At that time, our national leader of the response, Dr. Fauci, said masks were not to be worn by the public and could even cause harm. Here we are months later, deaths nowhere near estimated numbers, hospitals are not overwhelmed, and we are wearing masks with little guidance but extreme fear. Even with best practices, the science on mask efficacy is not settled. And I think we can all agree, best practice is not being used by the majority. Also, what negative effects was Fauci talking about, and are they happening? Research shows us probably so. Two, the numbers being given to the public are misleading and driving fear beyond reason. Reporting cases seems pointless. Of course, if you increase testing, you will increase cases. Let's focus on deaths and see that that percentage remains very small. Not to mention the misguiding of the most recent chart our government put out, our state government put out, that was intentionally manipulated. Three, focus on deaths. Focusing on deaths from COVID is important and necessary. So is focusing on the impact of the government response. Suicide, domestic and child abuse, food scarcity, homelessness, small business closures, addiction, depression, these are all drastically increased by lockdowns, mask mandates, more regulation. Choosing our path to immunity, that's where this all comes back to, right? We have a public health issue, and we need to get it under control. What does immunity look like? What does immunity look like? Public health is a large and complex issue. Reasonable measures are necessary to assist in moving toward a healthier future. Some level of risk should be balanced with reasonable policy. Some of us will not be choosing the vaccine. What's the other way to immunity? Some exposure, increased antibody count, natural herd. My request for you is to let up on the mandates and let people and businesses choose for themselves. Thank you.
Thank you, Danielle. I don't see any questions. Next is Elizabeth Operman. Elizabeth? Good morning. State your name and address. You have three minutes to addresses.
Good morning. My name's Elizabeth Operman, and I live in Derby. Thank you for letting me come here and share with you. And I could certainly talk about many things concerning us at this time in our community, but I'm going to bring up just one thing. Our kids, our children, and our families, and our neighborhoods, and our community, think of what they've been going through since March, when things closed down. The schools closed down, playgrounds, libraries, sports activities closed down, the exploration place closed down, all these special things in Wichita, in our community. The stress on their bodies, on their minds. And there was little release. Sure, some kids were happy to stay home. Oh, good, no school, no homework, yay! But other kids, especially low-income families, didn't do well. And they didn't have a release, a place to go. Routine was gone. I have the joy of being around kids. I teach dance, have a small dance school. And when I started it back in 2018, I wanted to reach low-income families because it's expensive to go take dance class. But I had a heart, a yearning, and so I don't have my own place. I rent space at dance studios. I work around their schedules. And the tuition's really low. And so it's been fun, it's been great, until March. Everything closed down. And so the two places where I rented space, Wichita Children's Theater and Wichita Center for Performing Arts, completely closed. But that was fine, two weeks, yay! We'll help the hospitals, and then we'll go back and do our thing. But we know that didn't happen. And two months went by, and parents were calling me, "Please, my child, she needs something. Just come teach dance in the parking lot." And of course, that doesn't work. So a friend suggested a church. And so we've been using a multipurpose room in a church for the summer classes. But it's not ideal, no mirrors, concrete floor, not good for the joints. But, you know, I'm going to deal with it. Yeah, I don't know where I'm going to be in the fall because the church, it has its own school, and so, and then we can't stay there because concrete's not healthy for kids to dance on. But just go back to the children and what they're going through. I've heard a rumor that the governor wants to shut down again. Don't let it happen. The kids can't take it. So that's my message. And with 1:30 left, I have some documentation here by Dr. Scott Atlas that talks about how kids are not getting the virus. The research he's done shows that. And they are not passing it to adults. So they don't need masks. They don't need to skip school. They can go back to their childhood. Okay, please. The kids don't need this anymore. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Elizabeth. If you have documents that you wanted us to have a copy of, they can make copies and get them to us. Good luck with your dance studio and your continued efforts. Thank you. Next up, Alan Brinkman. Good morning, Alan. You have, please state your name and address. You have three minutes.
Thank you for my three minutes of your time. My name is Alan Brinkman. I live in Central on Greenwich, and that's all I'm going to expand on that because there's a lot of crazies in our comment section these days. Alongside me is my business partner, Tyler Clark. Together, we've owned a bar called The Stop for the last nine years. We both are lifelong Wichitaans and care about our community. Commissioners, we are standing here today, taking our time out of our busy lives to address you this morning because you have failed us. On July 21st, you passed an order closing our business, and others like it on the 24th, which means that we are now forcefully closed for a second time during this pandemic. However, this time it's different. Our industry, the bar industry, was segregated to be a scapegoat and labeled as the cause for the increase of COVID-19 in Central County. We understand you may have been feeling pressure to do something about the situation, but you did the wrong thing. In Central County, per Central County's COVID-19 dashboard on their website, which contains data from March 5th through August 11th, there have been almost 63,000 tests for COVID-19 in the county since March. However, there's been less than 5,000 cases in a five-month span. Symbol math tells us that's less than 1% of Central County, just over 516,000 residents that have tested positive in that five-month span. Your order to close bars has affected more than COVID-19 and has infected Central County. Seventy-four bars and nightclubs have been segregated and closed just because we don't sell enough food. Those businesses are, they're our owners, managers, waitstaff, and yes, even cooks and kitchen crew that you took their income from them on less than a three-day notice. These individuals have family, many of which are children, that rely on them. And don't assume unemployment is available for all of those people because I personally know that it is not. We have, you also have other businesses that support our businesses that have lost revenues. We have been in touch with many of our people who we do business with on a weekly basis, and they are hurting financially from these closures. The next failure we would like to point out is that you never told people they can't go to bars. You simply told them they can't go to bars that don't serve food. You see, people didn't stop going out magically. You now have a similar number of individuals wanting to go out. However, there are now less bars with less hours. Simply put, you now made every bar busier, totaling, defeating one of the purposes of the order, social distancing. It's just good old supply and demand. But best of all, the biggest nightclub in Kansas somehow wasn't included in the shutdown, a major fail on your part. In closing, oh, sorry. The best part, I had to add this this morning. The best part of it is the lady on the commission and our president thinks that this is order, doesn't apply to her. On Sunday, she attended another family's gathering where social distancing wasn't being observed. Commissioner Cruz didn't wear a mask that day. Her excuse? "I wasn't around anyone for more than 10 minutes." You also said that you hope no one takes pictures while you were there. There's pictures. Well, I ask you simply to admit your fault and not make excuses. You made it seem like you were above the law. In closing, I feel betrayed and led down by a county where we have called home our lives. You assumed we wouldn't do the right thing, as Commissioner Howell mentioned on the 21st meeting. You assumed that we would do wrong. Thank you for pointing that out, Commissioner. You felt that we weren't responsible enough, business owners, to manage our business through these trying times. Similarly to Commissioner Davis's plea on July 21st to our mayor, we would have preferred to partner with you and work with you instead of just shutting us down.
Mr. Brinkman.
I have another sentence.
You have one sentence? Okay.
Yes. You never wanted to partner with us, you just closed us down. We know you were thinking you were doing the right thing on July 21st to approve Dr. Men's recommendation, but it was not correct. We implore you to do the right thing today, and rescind the order that, and let's get through this together.
Mr. Brinkman, you have a, Commissioner Howell.
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you for coming to testify this morning. I do want to clarify, just in case anybody was listening, that my position on this was that we should have given you the opportunity. I did not support the motion.
Yes, yes, sorry, that wasn't clear.
There was an assumption made by the majority of the commission that bars and nightclubs would not follow the rules.
Correct.
And it's a very interesting point I don't think we thought of that you did raise today, that there's less places to go, that we're going to funnel people to the places that are left open. We saw that earlier when we shut down what we call nonessential businesses. Should say the county shut them down. We saw the businesses that were actually essential and still open had a huge number of people there, and social distancing was obviously less likely to happen there. So it's a phenomenon that I don't think was actually considered during that time. I want to be clear to everyone that I did not support the motion to close down bars.
I appreciate that. I'm sorry for that. That wasn't clear.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Brinkman. We don't have any questions?
Thank you.
Next up is Tyler Clark. Oh, okay. Okay, thanks, Tyler. Thank you, sir. And next up is Darren Greving. Darren? Good morning. State your name and address. And you have three minutes to addresses.
Morning. Darren Greving. I live in District 3. Not a public speaker, so it's a little intimidating. I'm a lifelong Wichitaan and a father of a single family, single-income family. I've spent 23 years in the industry and own a local bar that serves food and a state license, but we do not have a DER. We use that as a tool to prevent minors from entering. Wichita's DER has a 30% requirement in order to let minors into DEs. That's the only difference. It has no bearing on the safety of the patronage and confuses businesses outside of the city. We're mainly small mom and pops, which wasn't the spirit of this order. We've experienced giant dips in our revenue after the first shutdown because of the fear conveyed to the public. Some of this fear seems to have spread right here. Commissioner Dennis stated he doesn't even go to bars. Commissioner, every place is different. Grouping us as one and stripping our income while you collect $100,000 a year seems wrong. He brought up his distaste for a bar's comment on the media from the mask ordinance. That was one bar. That did not speak on behalf of hundreds of others. Many went out that day searching for masks to comply. That business also complied within days. Commissioner, from how close your primary was, one might infer that people who normally support you don't agree with the decision to strip small businesses and their employees' incomes. We've been forced to close for nearly half a year. The first industry shutdown provided some resources. However, this industry-specific minority, there aren't deferrals nor other tools. Everyone expects to get paid, and savings accounts have been drained. It's asinine that this was a preventative measure, and as of the vote, there were no related clusters or deaths. The sheer number of DE and DERs overwhelmingly dictate, would have overwhelmingly dictated if there was a problem. The city's mask ordinance wasn't given enough time to see results before the shutdown. They have the tools to regulate the establishments that you specifically targeted, and the rest of us got caught up with in your closure. That was spiked by the July 4th. Activities, not us. People have not stopped going out. What you've done is displaced them into the open establishments. This can contribute to some of the issues on the news. Each place specifically knows how to deal with their own clientele. This is as simple as a regular at a bar being comforted or knowing who's banned. We all have to pay our bills. Employees can't just wait around for it to reopen. We lose our staff, we lose our customers. We don't just close everything and reopen the same. We also can't make expenditures, we also can't make our expenditures with a temporary call center job, as Lacy suggested. Further, it seems hypocritical that she voted to close us and then attended the weekend's party maskless while remarking she hopes people don't take her photo. I was directly told by an individual there that she was in close proximity by others, even an elderly person, indoors, outdoors, and on a boat. I don't understand the reasoning of closing down good-playing businesses when the same personal consideration isn't used by the ones telling us it's so important and we must. You claim to believe in this so much, you push the city of Wichita to criminalize not using one. We expect you to lead by example, especially if creating masks is as safe as you expressed to us. I'd like to know why the capacity reductions, I'd like to know why capacity reductions and patio usage wasn't utilized before you just completely shut us down. Good intentions may have, I'm almost done. Good intentions may have been in place when you guys voted on this, but those haven't shown proven results. Those haven't proven to be a major contributing factor. As owners, we're good players in this. We try to help the community. We're asking you not to pick winners and losers. We put millions of dollars in these businesses. We're just asking you to protect us. We're asking you to pass a motion today to reopen us. We're running out of options. We just want to feed our kids. If you guys would consider a motion, I would like to point out that the largest motorcycle rally in the country is going on. So if you will allow us to reopen, please don't think in two weeks that it was specifically because of bars because I know there are hundreds, if not more, of people from this county going to Sturgis right now. I'm not saying that Sturgis is to blame or can be or anything, or anything will happen of that. Hopefully, nothing does. But I just want to, just like the Fourth of July, I don't want us to, you guys to say, hey, we reopened you. Now you're, now look what happened. So I just wanted to point that out. I'm sorry, I'm out of time.
That's all right. Thank you, Mr. Brinkman. Sorry for the hardship. We don't have any questions?
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, Commissioner Cruz.
Thank you, Chairman. I'd like to make a few comments since I was directly mentioned in a couple of folks' comments. Yes, I did attend an outdoor, small-family gathering this weekend. And I will say that I did practice social distancing. I did follow the rules. And because people want to try to catch me in anything and snap a photo, that's fine. I am trying to do the best that I can. And if people want to place blame for all of this on one individual, you're going to do what you're going to do. I am here to represent 500,000 people, and I have to err on the side of caution when I make these decisions. At the beginning of this, in March, we shut down a lot of people. And for one industry in particular, the salon industry, has taken this very seriously and regulated themselves. There have been no clusters, and there have been no reports, to my knowledge, of people contracting a virus at a salon. In fact, there is a study about a positive case known in a salon where there were no infections that were spread within that place. I get it, people are angry and upset. I understand. And the last thing that I want is for folks to fight each other. Fighting me, talking about me, blowing things out of proportions about me is not going to change this situation. I'm happy to work with anybody who wants to come forward with solutions, but coming today to try to tear me down because of something you heard is not a solution-oriented, it's not solution-oriented. So I get it, you guys are upset. And that's okay. And we have to work together to fight this virus. So if a commissioner wants to call the Wichita Eagle to have me, you know, defend myself, I don't feel like I have to defend myself. I followed the rules, I did what I was supposed to do, and that's all I have to say. I would appreciate everybody to try to work together to fight this virus. Fighting each other does nothing but creates more turmoil. Thank you.
Commissioner Howell?
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to respond to all of these speakers. I think we've, uh, we've seen some tremendous, um, passion this morning. The speakers, I think, overall were excellent. Made some really great points. And I want to say to them, if they're still listening, that I do appreciate them taking time to come talk with us. I did not know what to expect. I did see there was a, a really good list this morning of people signing up to speak. I didn't know what they were going to bring up. But they have brought up some really, really, uh, I think, important things for us to reflect on. And so I don't want to dismiss them too quickly. I do think we need to, to, uh, understand how much we are harming our small businesses. The last, last speaker, uh, for example, knowing that his family is suffering the way they are, I, my heart breaks for that, for that gentleman and his family. You know, we did shut down salons, uh, early in the pandemic. When we, back when we had, uh, very few cases in Sedgwick County, we did shut down small businesses like, small businesses like salons. And now we're, now we're using them as an example of how they can mitigate risk. And they, and, and they're doing a tremendous job. There's been no clusters, uh, related to those types of service industries. And I, and I agree that we kind of did jump the gun, again, I believe, on shutting down a business without data. Not a business, but a business industry without data. I expect that they would follow the same rules as every other business. And, uh, let me just reiterate that point. I think that we should treat them as individual businesses and not have a broad brush and say because one business is out there saying the wrong thing, we shut down the entire industry. So I, I think that they make a good point. And I would like to see us reconsider that sooner than later. One of the, one of our first speaker brought up some numbers, and she didn't have a chance to finish her, her speech, but she talked about, she received a letter from Dr. Minz that stated that we were around, I think she said about 0.6, 0.6% deaths. I would like to just clarify that. 0.6% is relevant to, um, back when we had 30 deaths. And this is based on people who contracted the virus or tested positive. And when you look at the updated numbers today and you look at this compared to the entire, uh, county population, our deaths today are at 0.01% of our population. Now, they're tragic. I don't want to see any more deaths in Sedgwick County due to COVID-19. But we do need to keep things, things in perspective. And so I think the point that they were making, I think, is good. I also would say the mask shaming, we knew this was going to happen. Mask shaming from people who are, um, passionate about wearing masks, looking down at people who are not wearing masks and not, maybe not know the reason why, that is a real problem. Now, I would expect, just like when Dot, when, um, Secretary of State Scott Schwab made a, made the case that says that someone cannot wear a mask or is refusing to wear a mask at election site, we need to let them vote. And unfortunately, I did get at least a report from someone that said that they, they were not able to vote because they were not able to wear a mask and they weren't allowed to access the poll site. Maybe there was some, you know, training, training opportunities or something, but at least it happened one time. I could talk to the, I talked to the person that it happened to. I would say that people need to access public spaces and be able to conduct public business. And there are legitimate reasons why they can't wear masks. And it's disappointing today to hear that we would have people who try to access our meeting this morning with medical reasons why they can't wear a mask and not, and it's to be challenged, if you will, to three level, three levels. They haven't explained themselves. I think we can do better. So I, I think there's opportunities here from these speeches today. I, I, I will not forget what they said. And I want to, I just want to encourage them and let them know that they made a difference this morning. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Commissioner O'Donnell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I also agree with Commissioner Howell. It's, it's, uh, something we need to look into. We need to see what we can do to help, um, this industry. We heard from a lot of people who are suffering, and we can't take that lightly. And I would also like to, um, respond. Commissioner Cruz was mentioning me when she was talking about reaching out to the Wichita Eagle. I just find it ironic that she's saying we need to be nice, support, not attack each other, when she continually attacks three of us on this commission. Both on Facebook, behind the scenes, everybody knows it. And so the person preaching kindness is the least kind of everybody up here. And everyone in this room at least knows it. Staff knows it. We all know it. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Motion to receive and file. Be a motion to-
I can make a motion to receive and file the public comments today.
Okay. Been a motion and a second to receive and file the public comments. Madam Clerk?
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye.
Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Consideration of minutes. Item A, regular meeting minutes of June 17th, 2020.
Commissioners, you received a copy of the minutes from the June 17th meeting. Any corrections or additions? Being none, I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Been a motion and a second to approve the minutes. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye.
Madam Clerk, next item, please.
New business. Item B, a county zone change request from rural residential to SF-20, single-family residential, to allow creation of lots less than two acres in size, generally located south of East MacArthur Road and west of South 135th Street East.
Good morning, Scott.
Good morning.
Welcome to the meeting.
Thank you. Uh, this item is an application for a zoning change from rural residential to SF-20, single-family residential zoning. The rezoning site, as was indicated, is generally located, uh, southwest of South 39th Street and 135th Street. The surrounding properties are zoned rural residential and in use for single-family residences or for agricultural uses. The applicant is requesting the rezoning in order to allow for the creation of lots that are less than the two-acre minimum required by the rural residential zoning. The applicant plans to access water from the rural water district number three and utilize alternative sewer systems for the lots. The alternative sewer systems require a minimum lot size of at least one acre. The property can be accessed using gravel streets, uh, 39th Street and 135th Street specifically. The Metropolitan Area Planning Commission recommended approval of the request eight to three. Fourteen protests have, petitions have been received totaling 58.6% of the protest area. This exceeds the 20% by state statute and as a result requires a three-fourth majority, or four out of five commissioners, for approval. You have a number of, uh, action options. Uh, one is to adopt the findings of the MAPC and authorize the chairman's signature for the resolution, which would again require three-fourths, four out of five votes. You can deny the application by making alternative findings and override the MAPC recommendation. This too would require four out of five votes. Or you can return the item to the MAPC with a simple majority. I'll go through the PowerPoint to show a little bit more detail about the, the application. So here's the, uh, map showing the zoning in the area. It's all rural residential. Here's an aerial of the area. You can see the other, uh, single-family uses and agricultural uses. Here's, uh, the map from the comprehensive plan, showing that this is outside the, any of the urban growth areas. Here's, uh, the map, the document provided by the applicant, showing the proposed lots that would be created from this. And I should clarify, uh, this is illustrative of what they intend to do. The, the property is not platted, so there would have to be a separate plating process. So here are photos, uh, from near the site. This is looking northwest. This one's looking southwest. This is looking west. Northwest. Looking down the street to the east. Looking to the west along the same street. Looking to the northeast. Here's the, uh, map that shows the protest petitions that were filed. Again, this exceeds the 20%, and so would require three-fourths majority to approve. There's the aerial. And with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Okay, are there any questions? I don't see any. So the, uh, planning commission, uh, voted eight to three in, in favor of approval of this?
That's correct, sir.
Okay. I did look through the notes and read, read the commission comments, uh, the planning commission comments, so. Uh, I don't see any other questions at this time. So with that, I'll, um, make a motion to approve, the zoning as presented.
Second.
Sorry?
I assumed there would be public comment on this. A public hearing, I didn't know.
Is there, uh, it is a new item. Is there anybody from the public speaking to, on this? No. Thank you. Thanks, Tom. And thanks, Commissioner, for relying on me.
So I do have some questions.
Oh, Commissioner Howell?
Apologize, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I apologize for not, uh, speaking up quickly earlier. I wanted to see if there was any public comment before I asked other questions and so. The applicant, right now, do they, have they indicated what they plan to do with this land? You said it's not platted, but do they, they define exactly what the plan is?
Uh, my understanding is that they're proposing to divide it up into smaller lots for residential use.
In terms of the lot size, is that something that can be determined at any point in the future?
Uh, in terms of the lot size, uh, that would be governed by the use. They're proposing to use alternative septic systems. So that would require at least one acre of minimum lot size. And it will depend on the percolation rate of the soils.
Okay. And SF-20, just for clarity, is 20,000 square feet for the lot?
That's correct. That's, uh, the minimum size that's allowed by the zoning district.
Okay. And I don't have the math in front of me, but how many acres is 20,000 square feet?
I don't have, I'd have to calculate that, sir.
I can calculate it. That's fine. So right now, that's really not determined by anybody. And did the, did the folks that voted in favor or against this, did they provide any rationale relevant to the golden factors?
Uh, the, uh, the recommendation in favor, uh, the golden factors is spelled out in the, uh, MAPC minutes and the agenda report that went to them. In terms of the folks, uh, the three who voted, uh, not in favor of the motion, uh, to approve, uh, what they specified, uh, was generally the appropriateness, uh, the golden factor identifying the appropriateness of the, uh, intended land use, uh, relative to the surrounding properties. And, uh, namely, it was that the, the lots were smaller than what's, uh, in the area.
So the other lots that are surrounding this, are they all rural residential?
They are. That's correct.
And, um, those lots are minimum size of what?
Uh, minimum size is, uh, two acres for rural residential.
All right. Um, okay, thank you. Did the applicant intend, have they talked about what, the timetable as to when they plan to do any of the next, next steps on this? After this is, if this is approved?
I'm, I'm not aware of, of that. No, sir.
Did, the rural water district weigh in on this at all, since there was some concerns, some concerns about the rural water district? Did they weigh in on this and say there's added, you know, sufficient water supply?
No, they have, they have not reached out to us, nor did they speak at the MAPC meeting. The, uh, the applicant's agent indicated that they are in conversations with the rural water district.
But we don't know from their perspective whether or not there's going to be a problem if they were to add, you know, this drawing shows like about there are on six different lots, but it could be more than that.
Well, uh, they, this is, it's my understanding, this is the most that they could get there, would be the six additional lots based on the zoning that they're requesting and the use of the alternative septic systems.
And so with the six, six lots, do we have any assurance right now that the water district can, can handle six more?
We have not heard from them in either way.
All right. Did the, did the planning commission get into that question at all? Do they?
It did come up. It's in the, uh, MAPC, uh, minutes. And that's, uh, to address that question, the agent indicated that the applicant and the rural water district are in discussions.
Okay, all right. Mr. Chairman, that's all my questions right now. Thank you.
Okay. Any other question? Uh, Commissioner Dennis?
Mr. Chairman, um, I'm looking at the protest, uh, the 58.96%. What is, did they give any reason why that they're protesting this rezoning?
Uh, I do not have that information, but I can tell you that at the MAPC meeting, the members of the public who spoke in opposition to it cited, uh, traffic, uh, noise, appropriateness with the surrounding land uses and, uh, water pressure issues.
Thank you. That's my, all my questions.
Okay. Any other questions? And I don't see any. So there was a motion and a second to approve as presented. No other questions. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
No.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thanks, Scott.
Thank you.
Okay, Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item C, Evergy Direct Renewable Participation Service Agreement.
Good morning. Some kind of buzz.
Good morning, Chairman. Commissioners, Andrew Dilts, uh, facilities director, here to present the Director Renewable Participation Service Agreement, also known as the DRPS tariff. A little bit of background, um, in 2019, uh, facilities evaluated renewable energy sources and suitable facilities. We essentially had two categories, um, solar panels and wind generation. Uh, solar panels, at the end of 2019, I presented an evaluation of installing solar at the extension office. And as a result, uh, we secured 225, approximately 225,000 in CIP funds for executing energy audit recommendations. Uh, we also in 2020, uh, conducted and, or published an RFI on conducting energy audits. And I will have an update for you on that at another meeting. And then we have wind generation, which, uh, led us to the DRPS tariff proposal with Evergy. Essentially, a DRPS tariff, um, that consists of developers working with Evergy and the Kansas Cooperation Commission to erect, erect wind turbines that provide clean renewable energy. After the plant is commissioned, the energy produced from the development is sold to participating members as renewable energy. The retail energy cost adjustment, also known as RICA, surcharge, is substituted with a fixed charge per kilowatt hour, identifying a fiscal savings. There is no upfront or out-of-pocket cost to participate in the service agreement for the 20-year duration of the contract. The Ponderosa Wind Farm, located in Beaver County, Oklahoma, becomes operational at the end of 2020. This will immediately benefit the county, starting in January or February of 2021. In the last five years, Sedgwick County spent an average of $2,530,000 on electricity annually. Of that total, $582,540 is attributed to fuel charges alone. The substitute charge for fuel is 15% lower than the average fuel charge the county has been paying. The five-year average fuel charge has been 2. cents, 2.1 cents per kilowatt hour. And the long-term service agreement locks in the wind fuel charge at no more than 1.8 cents per kilowatt hour for 20 years. Purchase increments are available in one megawatt units. In 2019, the total consumption for the county was 6.3 megawatts. I recommend purchasing five megawatts, approximately 79% of our total consumption. Sourcing the 79% of the county's energy from wind would result in an annual savings of 60 to 79,000 dollars. And over a 20-year period, that would equate to 1.2 or 1.6 million dollars in savings. Transition, transitioning, excuse me, transition, transitioning to 79% wind power would diversify the county's energy portfolio and allow for further energy reductions without penalty. By entering this agreement, the county would be utilizing clean renewable energy to power our facilities with no upfront cost and acquire an immediate fiscal savings in 2021. I recommend approving the agreement, authorizing the chairman to sign, and I will stand for any questions.
Chairman, we were talking about solar panels. This was another option. And I'm very happy, um, that this commission decided to, um, agree to the energy audit, which allowed some of this work to be done. You know, I think it's, uh, oh, the buzz just stopped. Yay. Did you guys hear that? There was a large buzzing sound. I, I think that the conversation that we're having around renewable energy is one that we didn't have before. And the things about renewable energy as far as wind, the, you know, wind power is cost efficient. It creates jobs. It enables a US growth industry to boom. Um, it's clean fuel source. Um, wind is also a domestic energy source, right? So it's sustainable. Um, it's not pollutant, right? Um, and so I'm just so excited about the fact that we are taking this step, that we are going to save taxpayer dollars by harnessing an energy source that is very prevalent in our Kansas skies. So thank you so much for your work with this. And I, um, if there's no other questions, I'd like to make a motion to approve the agreement and authorize the chairman to sign.
Second.
Been a motion and a second to approve the agreement. And thank you for the presentation as well, so I don't see any other comments. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Thank you again. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item D, presentation of the quarterly financial report.
Good morning, Brent.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. Good morning, Commissioners. Uh, for the record, I'm Brent Shelton, your Deputy Chief Financial Officer. Each quarter, we come to you and present you with the quarterly financial report, which gives you an overview of the county's financial position. This time, it's through the first half of 2020. It has been a challenging year so far. But the citizens of this county, um, are fortunate to be served by some pretty, uh, effective and some incredibly dedicated financial professionals. I'm honored to serve with them each and every day. And although they're not officing together, I can tell you that they're working and pulling together. And this report today is, uh, one of the products of their efforts. I would give you a quick reminder that, as always, this information is based on unaudited financial statements. And we're going to stay at a fairly high level this morning. The document's been delivered to you, and at the conclusion of the presentation, as you receive and file, then this document will be placed on the county's website. Let's take a bit of a high-level approach to begin with and look at the, uh, six operating funds that the county utilizes and look at the projected year-end cash balances or fund balances. fund balances in those six funds. The highlights on this slide that I would point out to you is that overall, we're projecting over a four-and-a-half million dollar decrease in our operating funds' year-end balances versus the same year-end 2019. Specifically, we're going to look at, for a net change in our fund balance, a reduction of over $4 million in the general fund, and that's, we're projecting that decrease partially because we're projecting a decrease in local sales and use tax, which we have not experienced to date, but we still think it could happen. Also, charges for services, specifically in the comm care, as a result of their inability to deliver services due to the COVID pandemic, are down a couple million dollars so far this year. Our debt service fund, year-end fund balance is projected to be lower as we continue to draw that down strategically, but we're looking at an increase in the enterprise and internal service funds, the one on the far right, of about $900,000. Primarily, what we're seeing there is that there will be a transfer from the general fund to that fund at the end of the year for risk management. We have seen increased workers' compensation costs, increased claims and some deductibles that we've had to pay there, and our insurance premium costs have increased as we've moved into a harder market. So some of the general fund reduction in fund balance is going to be picked up in an increase in the fund balance in that fund. Let's look specifically now at our property tax-supported funds, and if you will notice by this chart, we're continuing to see a steady increase, a pretty straight line, year over year, in terms of the revenues that we received in these funds. If you recall back in April and early May, there was a lot of concern as we entered into the pandemic response, where our tax collections would be. And I'm pleased to report that 2020 tax collections for the first and second half came in at about 95.9%, which is about a half percent off of what we experienced the year before. So folks were able to make those second half property tax payments, a lot of them were in escrows, and the money was already in place. So we didn't experience some of the, of the impact that we thought we might. As you know, that's going to lag, because those valuations were established at the beginning of 2019, and then those things are built in, so that's going to be something that would be slow to respond to the pandemic, but our collections did look good at second half. The expenditures in those same funds are held, being held consistent, if not just a little bit below what they were at this point last year. There's been some realignment between contractuals and commodities, but overall, I guess the story here is that this organization is doing a good job of controlling and monitoring expenses as we respond to the COVID-19 pandemic. The top 10 revenue sources in these funds, number one, about 75% of it comes from our ad valorem or property taxes, and you can see that's up about $5.5 million or 4.1% change. Right below that are the sales and use taxes, and as we've indicated, we're projecting to see lower sales and use taxes, but it just hasn't happened yet. I think that some of the stimulus funds that have been provided to unemployed workers, and we've certainly had more than our share of those, has sort of can help stabilize some of the impacts on that, although we've seen some increases and some decreases that were more marked in years past year-to-date, we're kind of holding steady with our sales and use tax collections. If we look in terms of percentage increases in this area, we see that our largest increase on a percentage basis would be in the insurance fees area. These are a result of collecting some fees a little sooner this year than we did in 2019 due to the switch over in the billing process that we used, that was outsourced in 2019, and kind of slowed down the first half of 2019 collections. We're also seeing a large increase in officer fees, it's the third line from the bottom, and those are fees that are charged by the Register of Deeds office for document filing, per-page fees for mortgages, deeds, and things of that nature. What we have seen is a big increase in mortgage refinancing, and a lot of filings have been, have occurred in that area because of the lower interest rate environment. There's this law, strong demand for residential real estate, so we've seen an uptick in those fees. But the line right below it, investment income, and we'll get into that in a little more detail, shows a significant drop in our investment income in 2020 year-to-date versus 2019 year-to-date. We move to the next slide. Our key personnel expenditures in the property tax-supported funds. I guess what I would have you note on this is that there's no change year-over-year in our personnel expenditures in these funds. We have experienced some increase in salaries and wages, we're paying a higher portion or a higher percentage of, the amount that's being spent by the county for insurance premiums for employee benefits has increased by 5%. And we've seen some increase in workers' compensation premiums, so even though we enjoyed pay adjustment for employees, we've seen the effects of the furloughs that were used in the first half of the year, the elimination of the bonus pool from 2019 has some ways that have kept personnel expenditures flat for the property tax-supported funds. The non-personnel expenditures in these funds, again, a slight decrease year-over-year, but basically staying flat. What we've seen there is that our largest percentage increases are in the bottom line, subsidized live-in support that occurs with a community developmental disabilities organization. They've changed the method of their subsidized live-in support and are paying on a per-unit versus a per-person basis. There've been some software and hardware maintenance expenditures that we've seen increases year-over-year, but by and large, we're looking at a flat, flat non-personnel expenditures in those funds. Next, let's move to the Fire District. And here we see a very straight line, year-over-year increases that are very consistent due to consistent increase in the tax base for the Fire District. Their expenditures remain fairly consistent, 2019 was a little higher than 2020 as a result of funds that were transferred to prepare for the new fire station in Andale. And this chart gives you a little more detail on that, the bottom line shows that one and three-quarter million dollar transfer out in the second quarter of 2019 versus this year, so it shows the, that change, otherwise basically consistent year-over-year revenue and expenditures in the Fire District. Let's shift now to the county's non-property tax-supported funds. And all of a sudden, the chart has a big spike. That's as a result of the $99.6 million in CARES funds that we received in the second quarter of 2020. If we take out the $99.6 million, that is flat year-over-year. The expenditures in non-property tax-supported funds, similar to what we saw in the property tax-supported funds, we're seeing relatively stable, if not some decrease in the level of the expenditure, so we're holding the line on expenses in that area as well. Let's look at the top 10 revenues in those funds in a little more detail. Top line, you'll see $100 million in CARES Act funds. We see also some increases in our solid waste fees that have been collected this year due to the fee increase last year. And, let's see, I think basically we're seeing pretty consistent year-over-year. Same thing in these areas, one thing is in the Medicaid fees, where we see a reduction of about 27%. Those are due to reduced services that we talked about before in comm care. They were not able to open and provide the level of service that they have in the past, so that's why we're seeing that decrease.
Brent, can I ask a question real quick?
Sure.
I recall that we had some effort in Topeka about the 911 wireless fees. I think we were successful, and so this impact of a slight increase, but it's eight, percentage-wise, it's 8%, so that's, are we feeling comfortable and positive that we're in a good spot on our wireless fees for the 911?
I think so, I think the fee went from 60 cents to 66 cents.
Something like that.
So we're seeing, we're kind of consistent with that, in terms of what we're collecting.
Okay. Thank you.
If we look at the expenditures on this chart in a little more detail for those non-property tax-supported funds, what we're seeing is some reduction in grant awards, primarily these are occurring in the Department of Aging. It's not a big change in the grant awards on a total-year basis, but they're doing some different ways of doing the accounting, so some things that are booked in one quarter of one year may not be being booked in this quarter. So I think those things will, will pretty much even out as we go through the rest of the year. We've seen some reductions in salaries and wages there, a pretty sizable amount. Again, the furloughs that occurred have had some impact there. We had a tire roundup program in 2019 that was captured in management services that didn't occur in 2020, so those are some things that have contributed to the largest fluctuations from one year to the next on those specific items. If we look at our current total fund balance with the balance at the end of June, we see that we had $131 million, and this chart just shows how that fund balance fluctuates over the course of the year. We get distributions in quarter one and quarter two of property taxes, and then those are spent down throughout the rest of the year. And so this stays, although it's an erratic-looking chart, stays fairly consistent year-over-year. Depicted on the next slide is a percentage of our unrestricted fund balance, or the unrestricted balance as a percentage of budgeted expenditures. You see that we're currently at 58%, which is a high, the highest level that we've seen at this point since 2015. Reminder that we want to stay, or our policy says we will stay above 20%, and we have been consistently able to do that. A little bit of detail about our investment portfolio. Last year, we had an investment portfolio at this time of about $254 million. This year, it's $386.9 million, so that increase is largely due to the fact that the CARES funds are considered part of our investment portfolio at this time. Doesn't mean we're going to have those additional funds to use for county operations. Federal Treasury guidance told us that if we earn money on that, it needs to be used for our CARES eligible expenditure, so it just kind of adds a little bit to that, to that pot of funds. I guess the thing here is that since yields are so much lower than they were, our investment income is off by about $800,000 year-to-date from what it was last year. Last year was a bit of an anomaly in that we saw rising interest rates, took advantage of reinvesting some of those funds, even called some early and reinvested them at higher amounts. As interest rates have lowered, we've had some investments called, and we've had to reinvest them at substantially lower amounts. Just highlight five significant capital projects that are either nearing completion or at other stages of development. Fire Station 31 that we visited about earlier is the 9,800-square-foot four-bay station that's being constructed in Andale. Groundbreaking on that occurred on August 3rd, and it has, is under construction. Final completion of that is scheduled for April of 2021. In our adult residential area, there was an expansion, is being planned, 680-foot-square-foot expansion, that is going out to bid on September 1st. That project is projected to come to you for approval on September 9th. The 11th-floor courtroom expansion is done, and that turned the chief judge's courtroom into a traffic court. That was completed at the end of May, provided some ADA accessibility and some additional functionality there. One road project that is scheduled to be completed right away, wanting to be done before school starts, is a project for near-campus high school. It has some turn lanes, sidewalks, and traffic signal at 55th Street South and Meridian. That is scheduled to be completed in mid-August. And then finally, the bridge replacement on 143rd Street East and North of Pawnee, that's adjacent to the Crystal McCullough Academy, and that also is slated to be finished by the first week of September in hopes and time for the beginning of school. So if I sum up the key points of where we are today versus where we were last year, we're continuing to see improvement in gains in our property tax-supported funds. We have been hit hard by unemployment, we have had the dubious distinction of having the highest unemployment rate in the state of Kansas, and despite those headwinds, we've been able to maintain some pretty decent stability with our funds. Fees for mental health services are being hit hard because of the closures that comm care experienced, and we are maintaining flat expenses year-over-year. We did, as I said earlier, maintain pretty consistent property tax collections. We have experienced some growth in sales and use taxes, and we went into this predicting that those would fall off with the uncertainty and the additional stimulus that may be made available. We're still expecting to see some hits in that area in the second half of the year. Lower interest rates helped us on one hand and hurt us in the other. We are, got more money on those document filing fees, but our investment income is down. So as we look pre-COVID pandemic and where we are today, we're seeing, we're forecasting some additional revenue declines. We are recovering a lot of our COVID-related expenses through the CARES Act funding, and we're focused to do what we can to assist with a near-term and a sustained economic recovery for our county. And with that, I would stand for questions.
Okay. Brent, thanks for a solid presentation. Congratulations to the staff and the whole organization for keeping, keeping everything good. Commissioner Howell?
As always, I just want to say thank you for a great job. This is always a great report, and I just say thank you. I do have one question over on Slide 21. The intersection of 55th and South Meridian, it only says $440,000 are committed out of a $1.35 million budget. Does that, might still come in on that, or what's the situation?
I could...
My mic was off, did you hear the question okay?
Give me, repeat it again.
Slide 21 shows that $440,000 are committed on a $1.35 million project at 55th and South Meridian, a bridge, a bridge replacement. I'm just curious if that's, that data hasn't caught up with the chart yet, because this seems like a very large difference.
Right, these will be numbers as of the end of June, so we're probably just not caught up with the final substantial completion payment. But I'll verify that and get back with you.
Very good. That's my only question, thank you very much.
Okay. I noticed the other questions, so I'll make a motion to receive and file. Been a motion... Been a motion in a second to receive and file. I don't see any other comments. So Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Thanks again, and thank you, staff, Lindsey, and your whole group, Brent. Okay, Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item E, Discussion of the Coronavirus Aid, Relief, and Economic Security Act. Chairman, as Lindsey's taking the podium, item E and F are both CARES-related matters today. Item E, Lindsey will, there's a single funder request on this item. We would ask for the commission to vote on that, and then her second component will be a spending status, which is receive and file only.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Good morning, Commissioners. Lindsey Povrissow, your CFO. So as Tom said, the first item that I'll present to you is a request to fund an assessment of HVAC systems in 12 county buildings. And I'll get into the details momentarily, but quickly, I just want to remind you of the process that we've established for CAREers. So because you all did pass an emergency declaration, and because the manager does have the ability to waive policy, we're not necessarily going through the lengthy RFP and RFB processes that we normally would because of the timing, although we do have some procurement standards in place and everything is reviewed by Joe Thomas in advance of anything being purchased. What we do have is on these less typical requests, if it's not PPE or custodial supplies or those things that I talk about routinely, what we ask is that a department fill out a specific form that was developed by our consultant at Wood O'Briens. We submit that to them, and they complete a comprehensive eligibility memo. And that memo includes a number of items. It looks at the actual ask, it looks at the procurement process behind the ask, it looks at whether it complies with CAREers, whether it complies with uniform guidance, it looks at whether it's cost reasonable given the circumstances, and then they tell us whether or not they think it would be an eligible expense. If it's an eligible expense and it's less than $10,000, we have an internal group, again, that's made up of a number of finance and legal folks who vote. If they vote to approve up to $10,000, then we'll go ahead and move through that process and make the purchase. If it's up to $50,000, the, that same group will vote to make a recommendation to the county manager for approval. If he approves, then we'll move forward with that expense. If it is greater than $50,000, then again, we follow the same process. We vote to make a recommendation to the county manager. If the county manager approves, then we will bring that forward to you all. And so this has been through that process now. It has survived the financial assistance team, and it has survived the county manager. And so now it is coming to you for your discussion. So what we would propose is to do an assessment of 12 buildings to document the current HVAC system operations and provide recommendations to operate the buildings in accordance with the American Society of Heating, Refrigerating, and Air Conditioning Engineers and the Center for Disease Control Guidelines. And so CDC guidance states that public buildings should ensure that ventilation systems and facilities operate properly. For building heating, ventilation, and air conditioning systems that have been shut down or on setback, review new construction startup guidance and a number of other provisions. So the buildings that would be included in this assessment, not saying that it would not potentially be, the results would not be applied to other buildings, are the Sedgwick County Jail, the Main Courthouse, the Historic Courthouse, the Public Safety Building, the Crisis Building, the Ronald Reagan Building, juvenile detention, juvenile courts, juvenile residential facility, the jail annex, household hazardous waste, and public works. Each assessment will look at the original mechanical plans. It will include a visit to each building and a survey of the major HVAC systems. It will do a review of each HVAC control system and its condition and operation, a review of zone sensor type and status and condition, and then it will provide a report on all of those, along with some recommendations. So WIT has reviewed this, and including the procurement, they recommend it, or they say that it is recommended, it is $72,719 for that assessment of those 12 buildings. Again, it doesn't necessarily include the implementation of those recommendations. This is just to look at and see what additional compliance measures might be necessary to keep the building safe related to COVID-19. So if you all approve this today, we'll move forward with putting together the contract and actually doing that assessment. We already have budget authority established, so this would simply be authorizing the actual purchase. So Andrew is here from Facilities and can speak, I'm certain, or I'm sure with far more detail on the specifics here, but otherwise, we will take whatever action you deem necessary.
Thank you, Lindsey. Any questions from the commission? Don't, Commander Howell.
I do have a question. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just, so I'm curious, where this is leading, so if they get the report back and they say they can make improvements to some of these 12 buildings, the intent of that, I assume, is to try to mitigate COVID-19 transmission. That's the intent. I would expect to be pretty expensive to do refurbishment to any of those buildings. And so is there money in the CARES fund that's available for that type of significant costs that would be used to repair these types of buildings?
We, we have set aside funding for retrofits and remodels. Certainly, the $6 million that has been set aside for the courts that operate in this facility, to the extent that there's money available there, also for the juvenile courts, we could potentially target that as well. At this point, I have no concept of what these costs will be, and so, or how quickly they can be implemented, if they can even be done by December 30th, which would be a necessary part of that. And so Andrew, I don't know if you have any additional details that you would feel comfortable sharing, but I'd be happy to turn it over to you on what you might expect.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. Andrew Dels, Director of Facilities. Essentially, we're, we're going to get a, a presentation on the buildings and, and how they're operating and what implementations we can make. Some of those may have a significant dollar amount, some of them may be very minor. We're hoping that some of the minor ones with, with maybe some operational changes we can implement immediately without having to invest any, any dollars. It's just a matter of changing some programming on the existing system, and that's, that's essentially what we're looking for right off the bat.
Appreciate your answer. That's good. I, I guess I still have a question on the science behind this. As I've been listening to news reports, there's, it seems to be a lot of disagreement perhaps of whether this is something, is a significant factor in the transmission of COVID-19. So I don't know if we ought to be spending $72,000 for something we don't fully understand exactly where it leads and whether that, whether or not there's a science right now to back up. I need to spend that money on the front end. I, I'm just not so sure this is, except I'd like maybe a week to think about this. When's our next meeting, Mr. Manager? Next Wednesday? I'd like to see us push this off for a week, Mr. Chairman, if that'd be okay? Give us some chance to think it through a little bit longer.
Are we under a timeframe? Problem?
The only timeframe that we are under is essentially if, if we have an infection come in, implementing these recommendations will help exhaust any fumes or the virus in, in the existing room and preventing it from spreading to, to other rooms or throughout the building. So there's, there's a little bit of, of, of some urgency to this, but at the same time, there might be some things that we could do on the front end to try to prepare for implementing this in the future.
Okay. Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I guess where I'm concerned about is this building, for example. We know that we got a couple of chillers that are on their last legs in this building. We've got it in the CIP next year, I believe. So I'm not sure what the audit is going to do in this building, and I don't know if there are other buildings in similar situation that we've got some major HVAC work that we've got to do in the future. Can you explain what we would gain from this building when we know we've got huge problems?
So the, the audit is going to be evaluating how the buildings are operating and what the CDC and ASHRAE are recommending for limiting the spread of the coronavirus and not so much the, kind of like the energy audit, which we've discussed previously, would, would assess useful life expectancies and how equipment is, is, whether or not equipment's failing or, or doing its job properly. This is going to make modifications on, we've had, we've been approached by salesmen to install UV lighting, devices actually above the ceiling that's going to eradicate the, the coronavirus if it, if it gets to that point. The CDC has provided recommendations on what to look for and what we should be installing in certain areas and certain buildings, depending on the HVAC system. And this audit, or this evaluation would, would help guide us in the direction of the CDC and ASHRAE recommendations.
Okay. So it's more of some type of devices that would help kill the virus in a building rather than trying to fix the, the equipment that we've got now that's failing?
Exactly.
All right. Thank you, Andrew. Appreciate it.
Commissioner Cruz?
Thank you, Chairman. Um, you know, time is of the essence right now since we have a timeframe that we're under as far as spending this money. My, my concern is staff time related to what else would you find if we deferred this a week? What, what else would you do?
The, the only thing essentially I, I think that we could do right now in the meantime is, is start to compile the building plans and the floor plans that we would give the vendor if this was to, to proceed.
Okay. So, so Commissioner Howell, can you, can you explain to me again what, what you'd like to see further?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to respond. So I saw a news, a news report just yesterday, for example, about air handling systems in public schools and whether there's a question on whether or not the virus can be transmitted through the HVAC system. It's a great question, but there's not really a conclusion to that yet. I think there's, people are, are using theory saying it's possible, but I think that the, the primary mode of transmission is people speaking near each other. We already have filtration systems on these buildings. There may be other ways to solve this. Maybe there's ultraviolet lights that can be added somewhere, maybe there's ozone generators. I don't know what the right answer is. It seems like we've been, we've been given a, an option of one, and I have not had, I didn't notice it was coming, so I didn't have the chance to go out there and, again, essentially try to reach a conclusion by looking at some, you know, some scientific reports or whatever to find out whether or not it makes sense to spend money there. We have a lot of, we have a lot of needs in, in coronavirus. We're not looking for places to spend money, that I know of. I mean, we've got plenty of needs already identified. I would rather see as much money pumped into dynamic testing as possible, but there is, there is a zero sum game of dollars here, and you put money here, you can't use it somewhere else. And so is this, is this the highest priority? Does this solve a problem, or is this simply, you know, junk science? I don't know where we're at on this right now. So I, I don't know that I'm ready to turn loose another $73,000 for something I don't really have, we haven't really had time to understand it. That's all.
Commissioner, is it okay if I respond? Or Chairman?
Yes.
Sorry, is it okay? Okay. So what I would like to do in response to your questions is send you this memo that Wood O'Briens prepared for us. In this memo, they have citations to some specific guidance from the CDC and from ASHRAE, which is the professional association that we spoke about earlier. And so they have some links to some official guidance on office buildings for businesses and employers, and ASHRAE position document on airborne infectious disease. And so they actually have links to those specific documents, so we can provide a review before next week if that's acceptable to the commission.
Sure. Commissioner O'Donnell?
Thank you. Well, I am supportive of this motion. I, I do think it's worth spending that $70,000 of CARES money to see if people are going to become infected by being in our facilities. I think we, I know at the top of your list, you mentioned the jail was the first facility. We, we know we have a lot of potential liability when it comes to the people that are in our care. So I, I agree with Andrew that, that time is critical on this, and, and I'd be supportive of moving forward today, at least on the study, because I am concerned about people coming to our facilities. The one facility I was interested in that you didn't mention was, I know we leased the East Tag office, but we own the West Tag office. Is, is there a reason that wasn't on the list? Because we have so many citizens that walk through there.
Um, so the West Tag office did come up, and we, based off of the recommendations that are provided to us, we think that some of the recommendations are going to be the same at multiple buildings, and we'll be able to implement those a little bit quicker based off of what's, what's provided off this study.
Yeah, that makes sense, because I was just thinking, what's a facility? We have thousands of citizens go through a week, and so that, that, that would compete with any of our other facilities with traffic. So that's why I was wondering. That, that makes a lot of sense, but, but, but I think with the, the federal money and protecting our citizens, this, this study seems extremely appropriate. So thank you, Andrew. Thank you, Lindsey. I'll be supportive.
And to, to add to that real quick, depending on the recommendations, you may see another proposal before you, including those other buildings.
Well, based on the, the information and the backup information and timing, I, I do respect that you'd like to have a week, Commissioner Howell, but, but I think I'm okay with voting on it now and, and so we can get the ball rolling. So I'll make a motion to approve. Has been motion in a second to approve. Commissioner Howell?
Just to be, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just to be clear, I, I support the idea of making sure that our buildings are safe for people to come into, obviously. And I don't mind the fact that this is going to pass, obviously. I don't, I don't, it's not that I don't support the, the idea, I just don't understand it as well as I would like to. So I'll probably go ahead and vote no, but I expect it will pass. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner. I know, th- these are crazy times and, and timing, timing is, sometimes trumps some of the other stuff, but, so anyway. Okay, there's been a motion in a second to approve as presented. No other comments? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Motion carries? Okay. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Oh, you're, you still get to hang out with me. I have one more thing to tell you about.
Okay.
I apologize.
Now, would this, would this be another funding?
No, this one will be a receive and file. I'm just going to give you an update on where we stand with our spending.
Okay. Is this item F?
It continue, it, I don't know what item we're on right now, but it's a continuation of the CARES item.
It continues to be item E, sir.
Okay. All right.
I apologize.
Thank you for clarifying. All right. We're still here.
I'm still here. I'm sorry.
Yeah, you're, you're good.
So each time we present on this CARES item, I give you a quick update on where we stand with our CARES spending. And so quickly, at a high level, just to discuss COVID spending, which also includes CARES spending, we're at $7.99 million in terms of actual expenses since March toward COVID-19. Of that, roughly $1.2 million has been spent in the general fund. That's up about $42,000 from when we spoke last time. A good chunk of that is for the latest payroll that we had. We had about $8,000 for temporary positions and some overtime that's being paid out of the county's general fund, because we still need to have some evaluation to see if it's appropriate for CAREs. There's another $7,000 that we spent on custodial supplies, another $10,000 for the July drive-through tent rental payment, and then $12,000 for an N95 mask order. In the fire general fund, we are at $21,500. That's actually down from where we were a couple of weeks ago, and the reason for that is because some of the masks that were received were defective, so they were returned, and so that credit was given back, and so that reduced our spending by about $5,400. Unchanged from the last few weeks, and I expect it will remain unchanged going forward, we did receive some coronavirus emergency supplemental funding early on, $58,000. That was used to pay for cleaning at some of our correctional and, and jail facilities, and so that was one-time funding. We spent it all, and so no change there. Now, moving to the CARES portion, we are at $6.6 million of our direct allocation. That's up about $333,000 from where we were the last time we spoke. The bulk of that, again, is for personnel. The Health Department has started being able to hire in those temporary positions, as you've heard, and so we're up $63,000 for temporary positions in this last payroll cycle that posted last week. We have spent an additional $31,000 on that Family First Coronavirus Relief Act mandatory leave. We have spent another $40,000 on cleaning services. As we all know, this building itself was just cleaned pretty thoroughly a week or so ago. We've had another $18,000 spent on technology, the bulk of which was to stand up the temporary positions in the Health Department. The, many of those staff need computers and printers and things to actually do their work, so we have paid for that. And then, again, based on the eligibility memo that WIT produced, the county manager is able to approve $26,000 for chairs and desks for those Health Department staff, which has subsequently been ordered, and then another $13,000 for cleaning services. So we started with $99.6 million. We've spent $6.6 million. We've spent 6.6 million. That leaves us with rounding at 93.1 million. And we expect that within the next week or two, another 8.55 million will be outlaid, 50% of the funding allocation to cities, which, again, if you recall, was a total of 10.1 million. And then, of course, you all just approved school district funding of 3.5 million. We're in the process of getting those requests now, and Brent will update you with a little more detail in his presentation next. And then finally, we know that there was 420,000 allocated from the State Secretary of State for elections work. We're up to $153,000 of spending there. That is up $2,200 from the last time we spoke, and that's purely because of the two temporary positions that are being funded out of that, although I know that the Elections Office is in the process of trying to get additional supplies for the general election. So that is where we stand with our COVID spending, and I'm happy to address any questions. Otherwise, I recommend you receive and file that information, and then I will walk away.
Okay. Thank you. I was curious when other cities are going to start, but you just addressed that, so, okay. All right. Any other comments or questions being done? Motion to receive and file?
Second.
Been a motion and a second? No other comments? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye. Chairman, while we have the opportunity, sorry, Brent, I'm going to cut Tanya in front of you. While we have the opportunity just to put some information out to the people, I'd like Tanya to talk about communications efforts using CARES money, and then give Sheena just a minute to talk about hiring, where we're at in the hiring process within the county. Those questions come up every week, and it's probably the best opportunity right now where we're discussing CARES to cover those. So if you'd allow that to happen, I'd appreciate you just take a couple of minutes.
Okay.
Morning, Chairman and Commissioners. Tanya Cole, Assistant County Manager. So I just wanted to provide you with a quick update on our public awareness campaign. You have approved to date 150,000 of CARES funding toward our marketing and advertising of our healthy behaviors during this pandemic to include washing your hands, social distance, and wearing a mask. And as you're aware, we've partnered with CML Collective and AB&amp;C Bilingual Resources, who represent the African-American community and Hispanic and Latino community, and as well, we've partnered with COP Media for our outreach and implementation plan. So I wanted to give you some of the details of that outreach plan. We have outdoor poster, static billboards that our flight dates have run from July 20th through August 15th, and Kate's going to pull up the locations of those static billboards, just so you're aware, around the community. We also had radio ads that ran on Radio Lobo, La Raza, and Power 93.9, and those flight dates were from July 22nd through August 16th. We were also able to schedule interviews to talk about Sedgwick County COVID response with the stations KFDI, Power 93.9, and 102.1, the Bull. We also had print ads that we ran three ads in each paper from June 22nd through August 3rd, and those papers included the Community Voice, Active Age, Wichita Eagle, East Wichita, and West Wichita News, Sedgwick County Post, Mount Hope, Clarion, Time Sentinel, Ark Valley News, Bel Air, Breeze, Park City Post, and Keichai Lamp. We had several social media ads that ran from June 22nd through August 27th, and we just received a July report that we had over 1.5 million impressions, and out of that we had 8,500 clicks to our website from those social media ads. And then, most recently, we have invested in television ads that will run from July 21st through October 19th, and so we'll have over 3,000 spots that'll run on Cake, KWCH, KSAS, KSN, and Cox. And so that will run again from July 21st through August 19th, and that will alternate between, again, television and then our outdoor digital billboards. And Kate, if you can pull up the map on that. Those digital billboards will run from August 3rd through November 8th, and she's going to show you the map there of where we have our digital billboards. And so we've also partnered with Wesley Medical on their mass campaign and promotion. And I'd just like to let you know that we've received a lot of good feedback on our public awareness campaign, but as always, we're open to feedback and additional ways to get our message out to the public and to the community. So I'd be glad to answer any questions that you might have.
Commissioner Cruz?
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, Tanya, for being here today. I am excited about all of the messaging that we have out. I know that you guys came back. You asked for additional funds. Will you be asking for additional funds here in the future? Or this will cover us for, I mean, you have, you said one thing ends on August 19th, the other ends on November 8th?
I think, to be honest with you, I think I will continue to come back as we, you know, those are dates that take us out a while, but I think we will continue to want to push out this message. So I'll always, I think, want to come back and ask for additional funds just so we have that message out there in the community. And we're always looking for additional ways, as I said, to get this message out, and always looking for different opportunities to have that message out there. So as we look for different ideas to push, you know, the public awareness campaign, I think there are other opportunities.
I would just like to consider more, like, the bigger bang for the buck. So if television ads are way more expensive, but we hit more people on social media, I wonder if we could take some of those funds that we're spending on TV, maybe move them to social media, or evaluate how we're hitting different populations. I want to make sure that, you know, people understand. And maybe the messaging, too, instead of, and I love how it's all about practicing social distancing, masks, and hand washing, but what about the CARES funds? Or what about some of our opportunities that are available within our jobs that we haven't filled? Or that kind of thing? You know, if we have other opportunities to communicate, just yesterday, we met with a medical loan closet, and they said they didn't even know about the CARES funds. So I wonder, you know, those populations of people out there that are doing work in our community but just haven't heard. We live and breathe it, so we know about it, but are we hitting everybody that we can to get the word out as much as possible? I love the collaboration with Wesley, you know, the collaboration with other folks in the community. I'm meeting with WSU today to see about how to hit the areas around WSU, making sure that we hit those vulnerable populations, our Black and Brown communities that are most impacted by this. The numbers don't lie. I want to make sure that we make, that we take care of the people that are the most vulnerable. I'm excited to have Akeem on our team, and so I just want to give a shout out. I'm so excited that you're here as far as communication goes because that's such a big part of helping people understand accurate information. And so I appreciate this work, but I would like to see the difference between television ads and the reach as far as social media ads, also changing up our messaging or adding to our messaging about the CARES funds that are available within our community and how to apply for those, the process, that kind of thing.
Thank you for those comments, Commissioner. I will definitely take those into consideration. Certainly, to your point on the social media, we have dates, those are ending, and so we'll look at extending those dates on social media. So thank you for those comments. And as you introduced, talked about Akeem, if I could take this opportunity to bring Akeem up here and introduce him, Akeem Ashford. Like to introduce Akeem Ashford, our new Director of Strategic Communications.
Thank you, Tanya. Pleasure. Chairman, Commissioner, it's really a pleasure. You know, Wichita's become my home over the last couple of years, and I'm really excited to be here to serve the citizens of Sedgwick County, and I look forward to working with you all in the future.
We're excited to have you on board.
Thank you so much.
Okay.
That's all I have. Sheena, a quick update on hiring. Sorry, Chairman.
I'm here to provide an overview of the staffing report for the COVID positions as they relate to the Health Department. Currently, the Board of County Commissioners has approved 181 temporary positions for COVID processes. Of these positions, 170 are assigned to the Health Department. And as of Monday, August 10th, we have filled 25 positions at the Health Department through the county. We have 33 positions vacant on the county staffing table and 101 positions with the staffing agencies. We're currently reviewing 11 positions to determine if they should be on the staffing table or with the staffing agencies. Some positions that have been approved have been modified. For example, there was a full-time nurse position that was approved, and we've later changed that to two part-time nurse positions. This is a fluid table, and it will change from week to week to determine what is the best work arrangement for the Health Department. We have also requested a weekly report by the staffing agencies, and we have yet to receive that report. And as Adrian mentioned yesterday, we have several people who are being interviewed for positions and being looked at throughout the pipeline of hiring. And so once they are official candidates, we will capture them in our staffing report. So I'll stand for any questions.
Okay. Thanks for the report and update. Commissioner Cruz?
Thank you, Chairman. As always, Sheena, thank you for giving us this update. I know that I spoke with a couple of folks, particularly some media folks last week, about helping us get the word out for these, and this is a really good chart to show them exactly kind of where we need help, where we've been able to fill. The one thing that's not really listed on here, though, is the type of qualifications for each of these positions, and I know that that's listed. Is there any way that we could get something that is easily understood about the types of qualifications for each of these?
Well, we do have the ones listed on our website, and very quickly, let me look here. In regards to the staffing agencies, we could put something online where people could look at that, and then that would direct them to the agency. To do that, again, for interim, which is the medical ones, we have 64 positions that we're looking at. Those, again, are all different qualifications for each of those. And with a DECO, we're looking at 37 positions, again, broken up between. But we could put that on there where people could see the qualifications, but they'd be directed to the agencies.
That'd be nice. That way, it's easily understood, and thank you so much for this. I appreciate the update.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you, Sheena. I don't see any other questions?
Now we're ready for the next item, sir.
Okay. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item F, Discussion of the Coronavirus Aid, Relief, and Economic Security Act External Funding.
Well, today is the Brent Sheldon Show. Welcome back.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the Commission. Before I jump into this item, I just want to mention that a while ago, I talked about the staff that we have and how proud of them I are, that I am of them. And just to help prove that to you, Commissioner Howell, I have an answer to your question about CIP. So that project has come in considerably under the engineer's estimate, so we're at about 400 and some thousand on that project on a million and three engineer's estimate. So that is going to be very close to the final number.
That's what I was hoping you were going to say.
So we've got a lot of good news.
Good answer.
They were watching out for me. Carley emailed Jim Weber, and so I guess I can extend my congratulations to him, too. They're all taking care of me.
Excellent.
Thank you. Well, we're at that point now with our CARES funding that we're beginning to put some of the money out into the community and beginning to get those processes rolling. So as Lindsay mentioned earlier, there's some updates on the schools and the cities, and then we'll talk a little bit about the Financial Stimulus Review Team and where they are in their processes, and then we'll talk about an economic recovery plan for your approval. So to begin with the schools, that portal for the intake form went live a week ago on Wednesday, August 5th. We sent communications to all the superintendents and the business managers for all the school districts that are headquartered in Sedgwick County. So there are 10 public school districts headquartered in the county, even though there are 20 with territory in the county. We're focusing on those 10, the Catholic diocese, and then the four private schools that were part of the funding allocation that you approved. That portal will be open until August 14th for them to submit their information, and then we'll go into the process of setting them up as vendors and going through that process so we can fund the schools' allocations. The cities' allocations, their portal was opened this morning, and they've all been notified just prior to the meeting this morning, city administrators, city clerks, city finance officials, that for the 19 cities that are headquartered in Sedgwick County, that they can now provide their intake information, and then we can begin to set them up as vendors and set them up in the process. We're giving them the same length of time to finish the intake as we've done with the schools, so it'll be open for the cities until August 21st. And as Lindsay mentioned, they'll be eligible to receive half of their allocation upfront as they come in with receipts and proof of eligible CARES expenditures, then they can apply for additional funds going forward. Onto the Financial Stimulus Review Team, which is now meeting on a weekly basis on Thursday mornings. This seven-member panel is reviewing applications extremely thoroughly. We have people that are familiar with government finance. We have a retired CPA, as well as some county staff on that committee, and they are trying to gather a lot of information from a lot of different organizations. At this point, we've received 26 applications for a total of $13.2 million in funding requests. That will basically exhaust the funds if we fully fund those requests that we've received to date. So for the meeting tomorrow, we're providing them with an overview of all of these requests from the organizations that have been, a risk assessment's been performed on, and that we're doing some internal analysis so we can give them a snapshot of that agency and of that request. I think at that point, the committee will then begin to work through these applications and bring you some recommendations for funding. One piece of, we're doing some efforts to keep this open and transparent, so we have developed a social media notification that will go out on the county's Facebook page that just lets folks know the agencies that are under consideration on the agenda for the Financial Stimulus Review Team's meetings. We're doing these meetings on WebEx. We're also inviting the public, if they have comment about any of these, that they can email Sedgwick CARES, and we'll be able then to read that public comment that someone might have to the committee so they can hear that as well. As I said, the committee met next, last Thursday for their first meeting, and they were very thorough, again, going through the recommendations. They did make one contingent award recommendation that I would bring to you now for your approval. They have approved the full request from Arrowhead West, which is a social services agency that has offices in Sedgwick and other counties in this state. The request was for $7,496 for PPE that they've already purchased and for additional cleaning and disinfecting supplies that they have already purchased. So the committee's recommendation was to ask for your approval for that award contingent upon us receiving supporting documentation, which would mean receipts to prove those expenditures occurred. Also, they wanted documentation that those expenditures are for Sedgwick County facilities only, but those weren't in Western Kansas and one of their other facilities. And then the organization would sign the grant agreement, and then we would be able to provide that funding. So I guess that is, I guess I would ask for your approval on that, and it'd probably take a roll call and vote.
Commissioner Cruz?
Thank you, Chairman. Yesterday, I attended, thank you, Brent, for bringing this to us today. Yesterday, I attended a Rethinking Homelessness webinar, and it was talking about how one in three low-income folks are facing a And it was talking about how one in three low-income folks are facing eviction. And the reason why I bring this up is that the eviction moratorium has now ended. And when we think about how this money is going to be spent, doing the first-come, first-serv approach, will that allow us to hit our most vulnerable populations? And so, while I am supportive of this today, I want to really hope, I hope that our stimulus review team, the other folks in our Finance Department, commissioners, will understand that we have folks out there who don't know about this funding yet. And so, for us to do a first-come, first-serv approach, I don't know that that really gets to the meat of the problem for those most vulnerable in our community. So I want to preface that, this vote, by saying that when our stimulus review team does review these kinds of things, that we are taking into consideration our most vulnerable people. And I cannot repeat it enough. So I will make a motion to approve this funding today, but I would like to know how we can get that across. And Lindsay and I had a conversation yesterday about this to make sure that when these, because obviously, we had way more requests than money to give out. And just because someone knows about it, and I'm sure that they are needy, they need this funding to operate. But I want to make sure that our Black and Brown communities, our most impoverished places, understand what funding is available so that we can make the biggest impact. Because I believe that's what this funding is for. So that's my spiel about that. I would encourage other folks to understand the long-term effects of what's happening here. I think most of us do. But I want to bring it, I want to bring it up as much as possible. I want to make sure that it's at the forefront and that we do have a strong communication plan so that people who do need funds to operate their business receive those kinds of funds. And while I want it to be, you know, the first person who applies gets the funds, is that the best way to spend this money? So I'd like to just make that point. But I did make that motion to approve this funding.
Okay. So we had a motion and second. I would also comment that as a commission, we can take it upon ourselves to continue to talk to the Spark Committee and all of our contacts at the state level. Because in reviewing the latest Spark document, there is a lot of funds available to support things that Commissioner Cruz just talked about. And that we got to make sure that the Spark Committee understands that we are part of the state and not just, we're not just not by ourselves on this CARES money. So I've been reaching out lately to some of them. And so, I encourage everybody to continue to try to do that with. So that said, there's been a motion and second to approve. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye.
Okay. What else, Brent?
Okay. The final item today is to bring before you an economic recovery plan. As you all know, after the $99.6 million was allocated to Sedgwick County and Johnson County directly from the federal government because of our population, we received an additional $9.3 million of money from CARES money from the state of Kansas. Now, the rationale for us receiving this additional fund was based on the fact that we have the highest unemployment rate in the state of Kansas. To put that in perspective, our unemployment rate in March was 3.6% or about 9,000 people. In April, it was 18.7% or over 50,000 people that were immediately impacted and laid off or out of work due to the COVID pandemic. We've improved some since then. At the end of June, our unemployment rate was standing at about 11%, but that's still three and a half times where we were before the pandemic hit. So the plan before us today is in response to that and based on our high unemployment rate and how we can use this additional $9.3 million to help stimulate our local economy, put people back to work, and help small business. So to begin with, we thought we needed to get some data and find out what businesses need. We can sit in our offices and try to come up with something, but we wanted some data first. So we opened up a portal. We asked questions. What would be the most beneficial type of thing that the county could do for you as a small business owner? We received 140 responses. They were from a number of different industries. And what we found was that in receiving this information, we found that about a fourth of them said that they had laid off staff. Half of them were operating on reduced hours. We saw a lot of folks, about almost 30%, had staff working remotely. So they gave us some demography about what was going on in their organization. And then they identified four top priorities. And those were ways that the county could help. One was cash. Two was personal protective equipment and supplies. Three was training and workforce development. And COVID or rapid response testing was the fourth response that they gave us or the fourth priority that they presented. As we looked at what we have, how we have allocated money through the Sedgwick CARES Plan, we removed the COVID testing from the $9.3 million allocations because we've set aside $25 million to deal with community testing. And we came up with a plan.
Brent, can I excuse you? So we're on this slide. You're just getting ready to get in the meat of your presentation. I've been asked if we could take a five-minute recess.
Okay.
Okay.
Sure.
So we're going to take a five-minute recess. We'll return back in five minutes and then you'll continue. So, thank you.
Quick.
Pull up the hours, it's plenty.[1029.83]
Again, we're on the, uh, thanks Brent for allowing us to take a break. I thought that's what they meant. Is that a real thumbs up? Okay. Okay, we're back, we're back live. Thanks Brent for, for allowing us to take a break real quick. We're in the middle of the CARES Relief and Economic Security Act. You presented us an overview of a, of a couple, first page, basically. And so we're now into the meat of your presentation. So, thank you again.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So to continue, after we gathered the information and saw what the needs were, we developed what we call the Economic Recovery Plan for this additional 9.3 million in CARES dollars. Basically, it's three components. One is $5 million would be allocated to safe operating grants for small businesses. $3 million would be allocated to purchasing personal protective equipment and supplies. 1.3 million to provide training opportunities for laid off workers, folks that have lost their jobs due to the COVID pandemic, for a total of 9.3 million. As I mentioned earlier, 25 million was set aside to deal with testing in our initial CARES funds. Let's look at each of these in a little bit more detail about how they would operate. First of all, the $5 million Safe Operating Grants for Small Businesses. These would be grants that would be up to a $5,000 maximum amount per business. We've defined small business for purposes of the grants at 50 employees. And as we heard from businesses, they have purchased technology to allow teleworking. They have purchased technology so they can have touchless points of sale system. They've spent money on COVID-related expenses. Just yesterday, the city of Wichita announced the Open Air ICT Temporary Use Permit Fund, which would allow businesses to move their operations, whether they're retail or restaurant, out into the sidewalk or the parking lot. And they've made these permits free and streamlined process. But if I'm a small business that takes advantage of that but can't afford to purchase equipment to do to take advantage of that, this could step in and help fund that. A lot of businesses have changed their service delivery, their business operations. Expenses that are related to that could be reimbursed through this process. We've got an online portal that we will make live on next Monday, on August 17th, that businesses can come in and answer a series of questions that will let us know whether or not what they're requesting is eligible for one of these grants. We will keep that portal open until September 11th unless it's extended. And the whole idea is that a business will self-certify to us the expenses that they have had or that they plan to have. And there would be post-award monitoring that we would perform to make sure that the expenses were COVID or CARES Act eligible. They would also sign a grant agreement certifying that these funds are going to be used or have been used in an appropriate manner. The one other timeline is that funds need to be, have, expenses need to have been incurred between March 1st and the end of the year. So that's why we've put a timeline on the application process so that we have time to process the grants. We think we can get them turned around in a couple of weeks, get them into the hands of these small business owners. The second part of the plan is a $3 million allocation to purchase personal protective equipment in terms of kits and additional supplies. Over the past several months, the county has developed some pretty strong relationships with vendors that are providing PPE. We've purchased a lot of it, and under this plan, we would purchase a lot more. So we have some bulk purchasing power that we can leverage and get more for the dollar than a small business person can probably do. So we would purchase enough supplies that we could assemble and distribute kits through InTrust Bank Arena. We have had conversations with AJ, and they are willing to take this project on. Five to 7,000 kits with some additional supplies could be made available. So at this point, the idea is that there would be kits for really small businesses, some with maybe 26 to 50 employees. And if I'm a small office operation, I would come in and get the kit that's designed for my, my business. If it's a little bigger, they would have more supplies in it. But if I'm a small number of employees, but a retail operation where there's a lot of people coming, we might, we can add 50 or 100 disposable masks to that. So there's some customization, but some basic supplies for everybody. Just some of the things that might be in these kits would be some face masks, no-touch thermometers, gloves, sanitizers, things of that nature, floor stickers, so that we can identify the appropriate space for social distancing. And then the third area was $1.3 million allocation for training and workforce development. The idea here is that we have a lot of people that are currently out of work that could get additional training, they could upskill to be able to take advantage of employment opportunities with their current employer when they are called back, or maybe additional employment opportunities if their business that they were working for doesn't survive. We're not going to be in the business of handing money to individuals, but if an organization like a WSU Tech or another institution that provides some type of technical training can provide training between now and the end of the year to people, deliver that training, we can underwrite the cost of them doing, providing that instruction. They may bring on an additional instructor that would be an expense that would be eligible under the CARES Act for this. So the idea is to allow people to get more skills and be more employable when those opportunities do return. So just in summary, 5 million for small business grants, 3 million for those PPE, and 1.3 million for the training opportunities for laid off workers. We will, if this is approved, we'll post this information on our website at Sedgwick Cares, at sedgwick.gov. Folks can come here and get more information, as well as our Sedgwick Cares phone number where people can call and get more information. We want to work, get these supplies and funds out as quickly as possible to provide that stimulative effect. So with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Commissioner Howell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple of quick ones. The open air ICT program that was discussed and approved yesterday by Wichita City Council, that's only for the city limits of Wichita, is that correct? So other cities in Sedgwick County would have to do something to make that possible? Or?
What we're doing with that program is if somebody comes to us and says that they have received that permit, it is kind of, some of the vetting that you have to do to get the permit is some of the vetting that will be done for the small business grants. So it just makes it a little quicker for them. But if Clearwater or Goddard or Derby came up with a similar program and we're aware of it, that'll just help us streamline that process.
Okay. And then on the training, it sounds like the training year we're discussing is going through some type of a traditional training organization like WATC, for example. If someone says they want to take an online class, maybe their employees were displaced, they want to go to, you know, take some classes on how to become a real estate agent, for example, online, and they need a computer, how would they do that if it's not offered through, through a program like WATC?
That wouldn't necessarily be the only organization that we would, that we would use, but if, if an organization came to us and said, "We offer Microsoft certifications, and we have 10 people that want to do that," we could underwrite that through that institution. So it's going to be the, the organization providing the training that would come to us and say, "We have this information, this, these folks that are interested in taking this training." It'd be delivered before the end of the year. Now, I think we would probably prioritize training that would enable people to, I guess, go back into manufacturing and those kinds of jobs, not to say that the others would be ineligible. But what we heard from the survey was, these were the kind of the skills that they were seeing that they needed most. So our priorities are based on what we heard from the business community. But I don't know that we would rule those others out.
Okay.
It's up to the will of the board on that.
Commissioner Dennis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Brent, thank you again. I appreciate you and Lindsey briefing us on this earlier before this meeting so that we understood what was going into it. I appreciate all the time, effort that you went through to put together this plan. I'm fully supportive of what you're doing, and when we get to that point, I'd be happy to make a motion. But during our discussions that we had, my concern is always that the amount of work that we're putting on the Finance Department and all of our staff. One of the questions that I asked at that time was, are we going to try and administer all this, or are we going to look for someone else to help us with the administration of this process? So I guess I don't know the answer to that yet.
Okay. What we're planning at this point, and we've talked with Whit O'Briens, and they are developing the portal, which will greatly streamline this process. We don't have a community partner to work with at this point to help with the administration. But the question and answer piece of this for a business is pretty simple. We're going to ask them to provide us with a certificate of good standing with the Secretary of State's office. Some other information that shows that they're a Sedgwick County domiciled small business that meets this requirement, so we're not going to have to do a lot of vetting on that end. If they are approved, we would send them then the grant agreement, and they can do that on DocuSign, which will be part of the, of the process. So we're not going to be mailing paper back and forth. It's push a button, they get an agreement, they sign it, it comes back, and they're ready to go then to be funded. Then we put them through the normal funding process, and that's sort of a mechanism that we already have set up. We don't really, I couldn't really think of or didn't seem to find much appetite in the community for someone that would administer this kind of a program, so.
Yeah, so you think you can handle it?
Nothing better to do.
You're already working a lot of hours, so I appreciate that. And I appreciate you all volunteering to spend extra time to make sure that you take care of our community. So I know that there's another question, but at the appropriate time, I'd be happy to make a motion to approve your proposal. Thank you.
Commissioner Cruz.
Thank you, Chairman. As always, how do we plan to communicate this? That's my first question, so I'll let our communications folks figure that out, but I'd like to know the answer to that. And then we, we have the $5 million for Safe Operating Grants, which I think really nicely coincides with the city's initiative that they passed yesterday. Also, so we have $5,000 grants, so that goes to about 1,000 people, right? So if, if a business, say, is smaller and doesn't need the whole $5,000, will they be partitioned any other way? Okay?
Yes, some, that's just the maximum amount per business.
Okay. So, and then, and along that line, the 1.3 million for training opportunities is, are those partitioned? Like, how many, how many people will be able to utilize this?
An example might be that we have a major employer that's laid off 100 people, and they want to provide them some additional training, and they engage with WSU Tech to deliver that training. The cost of that could be underwritten. That's a way to do this.
Okay, so there's no, is there a cap on the, the type of training?
We haven't placed one in the original, but if, if the commission wanted to do that, we certainly could.
It would all, it would all come back, these requests would all come back to you, Commissioner, on that. I will say on the training opportunities, there is a lot of balls in the air on this right now, from Secretary Tolan at the state to GWP in the chamber. The businesses are locked into this on pivoting and changing the dynamics of work. There's a very interesting discussion about how to train employees, how to do mentoring and, and protege types of relationship. So we've had a lot of interesting discussions about this, and all of this will be evolving. But there is a very good interest from the state on this as well. We'll keep you aware as this progresses.
But this is, so this is for all laid off workers, though? This isn't just the large company laid off workers? This is anybody in our community who has been laid off, correct?
Absolutely.
Okay. Appreciate that. Thank you for bringing this today, and I will be supportive of this motion. I'm really excited that we are able to get something done quickly. I'm just concerned that we are going to be able to communicate it to every single person who needs to utilize these funds.
We've made communications aware, and they're experts, so they'll get it out.
Thank you.
Commissioner Dennis, do you want to make a motion?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate it. And again, I appreciate the amount of work that our Finance Department went through to prepare just this portion of it, and this is only part of 110 million dollars. So the work that went into it is going to pay dividends for our community. So I make a motion that we approve the proposal for the Relief and Economic Security Act, Economic Recovery Plan. Thank you.
Got a motion and a second? Any other comments? Being none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell. Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell. Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. Okay. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item G, adoption of the 2021 Sedgwick County Budget and the Capital Improvement Program.
Hello, Tom.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Tom Stoles, County Manager, here this morning to present the, an ask for the ratification of the 2021 Recommended Budget. As we have discussed many times, this budget season has been highly unusual. Our recommended budget is lean with a goal of continuing all needed programs and services provided by county government at a time when our community desperately needs these services and probably more than we're providing. And think about things like the Health Department, emergency services, mental health, and as Commissioner Dennis just brought up, finance and all of the infrastructure of the county is, is being taxed. We balance this budget, or this proposed budget, with sacrifice. There are no compensation adjustment for employees in 2021, no external travel or training unless it is specific toward required certifications, strategic deferrals of needed commodities and goods until times get better, hiring deferrals with the exception of critical positions, and intentional reduction of general fund balance of 844,000 within this proposed budget. Within the budget, we have tried to bolster areas where external situations have forced our hand, such as COVID-19, decisions made by other governments, state or federal, or courts, which mandate certain functions of county services, and general costs of doing business such as medicines and commodities that go up in price normally and we have to adjust. So today, we ask for your approval for the Sedgwick County 2021 Recommended Operating Budget, which totals $438,259,900. This budget will be supported with a property tax levy of $155,989,824, which is approximately equivalent to 29.359 mils, based on the estimated assessed evaluation and subject to technical adjustments. The public was invited to participate in two public hearings, a social media town hall and comment online at www.sedgwickcounty.org. I recommend you adopt the resolutions of the 2021 Sedgwick County Operating Budget and the Capital Improvement Program and authorize the chairman to sign. And with me today is Lindsey, our CFO, and Loriann Scholwalt, our budget director, who has done a lion's share work on this budget.
Okay. Thank you, Tom. Again, thanks for the summary. We've been through this quite a bit, a lot of input, a lot of comments. So Commissioner O'Donnell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And Tom, just you and your staff, I think, have done an exceptional job of staying within our budget constraints, not really seeing a reduction of services, which is critical. And you made it pretty flawless for us. And, and I know that's because of people like Lindsey and Loriann and Hope and all of our, our great budget office that, that we have. And I couldn't help but thank, I watched the Wichita City Council meeting yesterday, and they went through these machinations for hours, and it was very painful, and it just made me so grateful that we've, we've done such a good job over the last few years of staying within a budget and having a, having a nice little reserve for rainy days like we're experiencing right now. So I'm just very grateful to you and your team.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Dennis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I echo Commissioner O'Donnell's comments that we started this process back in February, and that was before COVID, with the pandemic. And at that time, we didn't realize what we were going to be facing in the next few months. But as, as our Finance Department worked through this entire process and took a look at what the impact was going to be on our community, we really had two choices, critical choices in this budget. One was whether or not we're going to keep the services the same, and one was whether or not we're going to provide increases in salary to the, to the very people that we rely on to provide those critical services. And so some very difficult decisions had to be made. And the manager can tell you, I bug him continuously about some of our employees, especially our first responders, on the starting salary that we have for those folks. And I am a strong advocate to giving salary increases to those people, but the unfortunate fact is, as I said, we've got two choices. One is to maintain as high a level of services as we can, and the other is whether or not that we're able to be able to afford, give salary increases this year. So it's a very difficult choice, but I think that we've made the right choice as we move forward. I hope that our great employees understand that we do value them very much. But at this time, with the budget situation and the downturn in the economy, I don't think that we can. So I truly believe that we need to pass this budget as we have before us at this point in time. I don't know if Commissioner Cruz wants to say anything else. I was going to make a motion to approve the budget, but I see there's another comment. Thank you.
Commissioner Cruz.
Thank you. Kevin Miles just said recently online that budgets are about priorities. And we talk quite frequently about the people who serve Sedgwick County every single day and prioritizing their health and well-being and the safety of our, our employees. I have received multiple messages over the last few days in regards to EMS salaries, FIRE, we can talk about that at the FIRE budget, but, you know, we have, we have incredible people who put their lives on the line, literally, who rush into a crisis when most people run away. And they deserve to be compensated in, in a fair and equitable way that is across the board. We have folks who we train in Sedgwick County, and they go to other EMS stations and posts because they make more money. Because at the end of the day, we want to provide for our families, and these folks who have very tough jobs, who, who really are on the front lines exposing themselves to this virus, to lots of other things, I believe that I hope that next year, understanding the climate that we're in this year and understanding how we all have to make sacrifices, that it might not be as a priority this year. But budgets are about priorities, and we talk about mental health, we talk about, we talk about it all the time. But when we start putting the money behind our words, that's when we start creating real change and having action. So I am supportive of this budget this year, and I, I believe that you guys have done the best that you can, Tom and Lindsey and every single person who has worked very, very hard, to make sure that we are utilizing the funds in the best manner possible and the most equitable way possible. But when the future happens next year for this budget, I hope that we can prioritize the people that work for Sedgwick County and compensate them in a, in a manner in which they deserve. The other thing is mental health. We have in our CIP, I believe, in 2022, $12 million for a new crisis calm care. We have some money set aside for those kinds of things, and I hope that with the crisis that we're in now, with our, our mental health cases on, through the roof, suicide is up, domestic violence, all of these things that really impact our community, that we put money behind these issues, these social services that really impact every single person in our community, whether you're rich, poor, black, white, or brown. So that's what I have to say. I am, I am proud of the work that you guys do. I think, I know that you guys are here very, very late. You work weekends, you work pretty much 24/7 now, it seems. So I really appreciate what you've done, Tom. I think that you have an incredible staff, and I'm happy to be supportive of this budget this year.
Commissioner Dennis? Do you want to make a motion?
Commissioner Howell has. I'm sorry, Commissioner, I didn't see. It's okay. I was quick on my light there. Apologize. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to, first of all, express my thanksgiving to our staff. If the public hasn't seen it, this is our budget book that we've been looking at for the last six months. It's a lot of work that goes, that goes into this, and we have, I think, some of the greatest staff that can figure out behind the scenes how to make things work. We, we don't know what we're doing so much as that they do know what they're doing. They lead us down the right path. And so I just want to say thank you to all of them, and a very heartfelt appreciation, especially to Lindsey, but there's a huge team of people behind her as well. So I hope that here. So I hope they hear, hear me on that. I would agree with Commissioner Cruz. I'm disappointed that we can't, you know, provide an increase in salary this year, and Commissioner Dennis did the same thing, and Commissioner O'Donnell. I also, I also am disappointed in that. I think the reality is, this is a year to tighten our belt. The fact that we were able to, to get a budget to this close to no growth is pretty impressive, and it's absolutely necessary this year. The shortfall is real. And so this is, this is the tough part about passing budgets. I don't like everything in this budget. I don't think anybody does. There's things about the budget that if I, if I could be able to change it, I would change a number of things. But unlike most things we deal with, this is not a right and a wrong, or a left or a right, or a, you know, a one or a zero. This is more of a, a work in progress. It took, you know, it took us six months to, to collaborate with staff, and they, they started this like, basically last year since we passed last year's budget. So we have been heard, and we've been respected in the process. We've been able to provide our comments numerous ways over the last year. And I know, I know that there's a few things in there I don't care for, but I think overall, it's a, it's a, it's a great document that represents, if you will, a, a, a common point between the five personalities that sit at this, sit at this bench. And I know that's very, very hard to figure out what that is. And so I want to say, I want to say thank you for getting that done. Unlike previous years, I, last few years, I've been wanting to separate the CIP from the general budget, primarily because of the $4 million in bonding. We tried to move away from that a few years back. We had a plan to stop doing that, and it was, it was exciting to see how we could save a lot of money on interest. We didn't need to spend that $4 million in bonding. We had a, we had a way out. Right now, what we're doing is very routine, and in my opinion, it's not as necessary as, as a lot of other things in this, in this budget. I think it's, it's a policy choice we make. A lot of other governments don't do that type of routine, routine bonding. But I made my point in years past. I voted against the CIP last couple of years, and I did vote for the budget last couple of years. I expected, Commissioner Dennis is going to make one motion for the whole thing, and I will support that, not because I think it's a, a perfect budget. There is no such thing. But just like legislation in Topeka, and Commissioner O'Donnell, you know this too, you do your very best to, to make change when you have a chance, to make change, and the process works. At the end of the day, no one gets exactly 100% of the things they want, but everybody's pretty happy. No one's completely happy, and I think that's what this budget is today. But it doesn't mean I'm not happy with the people who put it together. I am extremely happy with you all. I just think that considering the situation we've been in the last five months or so, this is a really good budget. So thank you for the work, and I'll support the motion today. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move we adopt the resolution for the 2021 Sedgwick County budget that includes an operating budget of $438,259,900 and the 2021 capital improvement program of $24,821,593. The total operating budget is partially funded with property tax levy of $155,989,824, which is approximately equivalent to 29.359 mils, based on the estimated assessed valuation, subject to review and technical adjustments. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I'll second that. Okay. Any other comments? Being done, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye.
Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item H, report of the Board of Bids and Contracts regular meeting on August 6, 2020.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Joe Thomas, Purchasing Director. The meeting of the Board of Bids and Contracts, our regular meeting of August 6. We're seeking your approval on four items. Our first item is Osage Country Addition Street Improvements Phase 1 for Public Works. This recommendation is to accept the low bid from Flint Hills Materials LLC, and that's in the amount of $556,119. Item number two, Agilent Gas chromatograph Mass Spectrometer and Accessories for Regional Forensic Science Center, and this recommendation is to accept the quote from Agilent Technologies Incorporated, and that's in the amount of $98,992.02. Item number three, contractual services for Sedgwick County's Division on Aging Transportation Program, and this recommendation is to accept the three transportation providers, the American Cab Company, ABC Taxi Cab, and Hayesville Medical Transport LLC, and establish the contract pricing per the rates listed, and that is for a period of one year. And our final item, item four, is weed chemicals for noxious weeds. This recommendation is to accept the low overall bid from Van Dees Supply Company, and that's also for a contract period of one year. I'll be happy to try to answer any questions you may have, and I recommend approval.
Okay. Thank you, Joe. These are the four items, and so I don't see any other comment. I'll make a motion to approve as presented. Been a motion and a second. Any other comments? Being done, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Thank you.
Thanks again, Joe, and thank the committee for all their hard work. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Consent Agenda.
Consent Agenda. Mr. Tom.
Sorry, Chairman. Recommend approval of consent items, I'm sorry, Tom Stoles, County Manager. Recommend approval of consent items, a through u this morning.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve items a through u. Been a motion and a second. Any other comments? Being none. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye.
Madam Clerk, next item.
Legislative issues.
Mike Papoun, anything to report?
No, sir, there's no legislative report this morning.
Okay. Next item, please, Madam Clerk.
Other?
Does anybody have anything other at this time? We still got a few things to accomplish today, but Mr. Dennis? Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think all the Commissioners can comment on the next item. I believe we were all briefed on the medical loan closet program recently, and this is a charity, basically, that if you have excess or used medical, durable medical equipment, that you can donate it to their organization. But right now, they don't need people to donate as much as they need people that need the equipment. They just don't, aren't getting the word out to the public that they are open and that they can have, you pick up, if you need a bed, if you need a wheelchair, if you need a walker, that those are available to you. So I just wanted to take this opportunity to help them with the communications to get that out to the public, so. And I know that Commissioner Howell was in the briefing with me, so I don't know if he has any other comments that he'd like to add. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Commissioner Howell?
Yeah, I'd like, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to just echo the comments of Commissioner Dennis. It's really a tremendous opportunity for people in this community to, that need medical help. Some people don't really have resources for that, and they're very generous. They've got plenty of, plenty of stuff to loan out. What they're lacking right now is volunteers. And COVID-19 has, has really changed the, the community's apparently connection to their resources. Their numbers have dropped off, not the stuff they have available, but the number of people are able to help. So I guess my point would be this, is if, if someone out there doesn't know about this and they need some type of durable medical equipment, wheelchairs, walkers, things like that, shower chairs, and on it goes, this place is, is wanting to help. And there's really great people over there, they're all volunteers, that they're doing a great job. And so it's on, it's on East Harry, just west of Rock Road, so if anybody wants to know about that. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. I don't see anything other. At this point, I would like to recess the County Commission meeting and call to order the governing body of Fire District Number 1. Madam Clerk?
Roll call. Commissioner, Commissioner O'Donnell? Commissioner Dennis?
Present.
Commissioner Howell?
Present.
Commissioner Cruz?
Present.
Chairman Meitzner?
Next item, please.
Public agenda.
Anybody from the public want to have anything, comments? We didn't receive anything electronic. I don't see any, so we'll close the public agenda item. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Consideration of Minutes. Item A, Fire Meeting Minutes of June 17, 2020.
Commissioners, you've received a copy of the June 17 minutes from the fire meeting we had. Is any additions or corrections? Being none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll. All right. Make a motion to extend. I did it. Commissioner O'Donnell, second. Okay.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye.
Next item, please.
New Business. Item B, adoption of the 2021 Sedgwick County Fire District 1 budget.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Tom Stoles, County Manager, here in a continuation of our discussion from before regarding a 2021 recommended budget. This is the 2021 recommended Fire District Number 1 operating budget, which totals $19,368,910. It totals, this budget will be supported with a property tax levy of $18,057,128, which will require a mill levy of approximately 17.889 mils, based on the estimated assessed valuation, and subject to technical adjustments. The public was invited to participate in two public meetings and comment socially online at the county website. I recommend you adopt the resolution for the 2021 Fire District 1 operating budget. And Chief Williams is here today.
Okay. Commissioner Cruz?
Thank you, Chairman. Again, I, I just want to reiterate the, the pay of our firefighters. Chairman Dennis, or Commissioner Dennis and I attended the Fire Ops 101, and wow, it was very, very difficult. I really respect all that you do. Last week during the groundbreaking, I had, I was double booked, so I wasn't able to be there, but I would have been there had I not had a prior engagement already scheduled on my calendar. I just, I really, I'm, I'm speaking to you two today because you guys do very hard work. It's, it's physically intensive, you work long hours, and I, I want to let you know that if there was some way to pay your people more, I, I, I hope that we can find that in the future. I, I know that, again, we train these firefighters, and they go to different departments, and that's really unfortunate because we have a great department and one that I hope that we can fully staff with people who are, are making this, the equivalent to others around at, at the very least. So thank you for what you do, again, to the budget. I, I feel like you guys have done the best that you can and with, with the constraints that we're under, so I appreciate your hard work. So thank you for this, and I will be supportive of this today.
Okay. I don't see any other comments. Were you making a motion?
I will. Yes, hold on just a second. Got to find it. Okay. I move that we adopt the resolution for the 2021 Fire District 1 budget that includes an operating budget of $19,368,910. The total operating budget is partially funded with a property tax levy of $18,057,128, which is approximately equivalent to 17.889 mils, based on the estimated assessed valuation, subject to review and technical adjustments.
Okay. I'll make a motion in a second. Any other comments? Being none. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye.
Okay. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item C, report of the Board of Bids and Contracts regular meeting on August 6, 2020.
Joe, welcome back.
Good to be back. Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. We have two items that we would like to have your approval on for the regular meeting of the Board of Bids and Contracts on August 6. And this first item is two each of a slip-in pump and tank units, and the recommendation is to accept the low bid meeting the specifications from Envina Corporation, and they're doing business as emergency fire equipment, and that is in a total amount of $45,880. And our last item to present to you is self-contained breathing apparatus, and this recommendation is to utilize the City of Wichita contract, and that's number 20200163, and it's with Ed M. Feld Equipment. They're also known or doing business as Feld Fire, and this is good through May 31, 2021. Again, I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have and, and recommend approval.
Okay. I don't see any questions, so I recommend approval as presented by Joe. Motion and a second. No other comments? So Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye.
Thank you again.
You bet, Joe. Thanks for your work. I don't see anything else on the agenda for the fire, so we will adjourn the fire meeting, and we'll come back to the Sedgwick County Board, Board of Commissions meeting. Madam Clerk, next item?
Executive Session.
Executive Session.
I move that the Board of County Commissioners recess into executive session for 20 minutes until 12:48 for preliminary discussions relating to the acquisition of real estate for the purpose of potentially relocating county departments, and that the Board of County Commissioners return to a live broadcast from executive session at 12:48.
Been a motion and a second to go to executive session. No other comments? Madam Clerk, call the roll, please.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis? Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye.
We will go to executive session. We're going to stay in this room, so we need the parties to vacate and make sure that the media is turned off.